We'll talk again. Go ahead and call this second meeting to work for twenty twenty three. If we need to send a little bit of.
Maybe they're presenting in the school.
One nation. A smooth flag, a stated mess of disease symbol of perfect friendship among United. Out I have another four it's the rule of the agenda. Uh, my place very. I'm sure.
No changes.
Saying that I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. So then move the second then.
Yes.
Yes. I have another time this is people playing their meeting minutes for October ten twenty twenty three and the emergency meeting minutes for October seventeenth twenty twenty three. I didn't see any corrections, uh, commissions.
No, correct.
No correction. Uh, I can motion to approve.
So.
To the move second.
Mr. Kurt.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yeah. Yes. Moving on, I don't know this fix is recognition visitors. We'll go ahead and start here with, uh. With ten, you please have an interview yourself and anybody we have online and reach out.
Tim Martinez IT and also we have June Roll.
I'm a deal so no ID. David Stafford just visitor.
Please inform visitor.
Same thing Michael visitor.
No, Dallas Cora visitor Raton football.
Leslie Hernandez visitor.
English bridge in the Raton. And a charge she gave. Happy one. Opex County manager's office. Shugelberro Marini's office. Virginia Shumko back to the manager nothing.
But other go back to county citizens.
How many were you visitor?
Does he tell you visitor? Going to slide in there.
They'd be Durant visitor.
Second Vincent Durant visitor.
Michael we adding visitor.
Can you grant well manager's office? Would you miss me?
Oh, come on visitor.
Hey, terrible.
The lady gave more kids.
We all ready.
All right, I'm ready. Christine Rodder visitor.
Ewan. Roger Smith, hold back to there. Governor Lockhart County Sheriff. Thank you all for coming today. Um, if you would also please silence any kind of thoughts that you have. Um, moving on with a lot of Anderson's public comment. So all the comments and anything that's, uh, house sequence or agenda. If you have any public comment, please ask to forward the mayor time to three minutes. They know about the comment. Oh, I understand. Okay, please go away with this.
Good morning. My name is Sammy Henry. Yes, I'm here. I've been at Opex County for nine years and homeowner in that one suburb. Well, the quick background on me, I'm a US Marine veteran who retired from nine military officer multi-agencies was in the South Beach United States. I had a attempted break in on my residence since seven October. Uh, I told nine one one this is a near forty three AM. I called nine one one some time in total nine minutes. Uh, dispatch told me that piece coming from there as well. And that, um. I told her I had a hearing. Somebody gave her as this with two or three minutes. When I was off the phone with her, just before I had a mother, I told her I had heard my voice and that, um. Uh, she said, go ahead and call back. I heard anything. This was the day ball. This was the new progress hall. Okay, during the conversation, um. She had told me to turn all lights on and, um, make some noise, but I had to turn the lights on inside, but keep quiet. I did tell her I had weapon and that when the officer to let me know when the officer arrived, I would put the weapon on safely. And. The total call of her was nine minutes. They took it from the timer, made the call so the deputy ride was fifty minutes. The concern we have is. The response time. But my background, which I thought was relevant, I was wondering why there's no AC that. Um, where it basically that I work for other agencies of the deputy or another officer too far out, they will another agency to sit. I am now aware of the lack of assistance from the city anymore. Um, my other concern is this has issues. Why I was told I could call back on the progress hall. The way I don't know how they're trained here, but when you have a breaking in progress, you keep a caller on the line. I was on the line for nine minutes. The deputy took, I had no problem with the deputies excellent, um, when he got by any questions. My concern again was the thirty minutes. Her not telling me. Whether he was on duty, off duty, it was going to take a while, but he would arrive. And, um. The, um. I just want to give some very serious response times, ACs and. And trade in dispatch. That's what I wanted to bring to your attention.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Can you tell me your, uh, what date it was again?
Uh, the date was. Seven October and it happened at circa forty three. Um, my husband was at town. I called him and circa forty three to make sure it was with him coming through the door. I hung out with him. I called nine one one. My calls showed that we do it deserves her forty three. Uh, the total call was nine minutes and, uh. I, I just, I was just glad because that she told me to kind of hang out and I can call her if I heard any other noises. Um, I did say it's center of the house, so all lights on. And even though, you know, we're entering and for me, I was nervous because my biggest fear was I wouldn't have killed somebody tonight. Because if they did remove the door, it would have taken one shot and then it didn't. And that was my biggest fear. I was hoping whoever was would be there to handle the situation. And I think she had told me. And prepared me that it's going to take a while, but if he was on call or on previous call. I would have felt a little different. I stood there watching the clock and getting the stuff in at one thirty. And this call I did at twelve, ten, or seventeen till, uh, one. And a, a baby in like the deputy that did this morning, uh, he was excellent, you know, when he got there. But my concern is, um. The other citizens, other citizens that aren't aware that it takes a long time. I know the county spread out and you can hear mine ears. Uh, but I wasn't aware at the time that the deputy wouldn't have been able to pull the city. To ask him back up. Or maybe even another, uh, county officer that lived close to those goals. So that is one of Apple's record set up there.
Well, thank you for coming today. I really appreciate it. We can really, uh, what is anything that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There any other comment? See now when we want to have a representation of the Raton.
Mister Chairman Commissioners, uh, County Manager, uh, my name is Leslie Fernandez. Oh, and County, sorry. Uh, my name is Leslie Hernandez. I'm here on behalf of the Raton Pickleball Club. Uh, they're sitting in the first three rows there and have come to support our, uh, presentation to you today and our two requests. Uh, first of all, I want to thank the, uh, your IT group. This is so far superior to what we had at the city that I can't, uh, even thank them enough because I didn't help consider most. So, um, just to start out, I want to play a minute and a half, um, video about. What pickleball we have seen base that we've haven't seen in the last couple of years.
Hey, I'm Matt Goole and I'm here to talk to you guys about pickleball. Pickleball, the fastest running sport in America, was invented by three dads on Bay Bridge Island back in nineteen sixty five. It's a combination of tennis, ping pong and badminton. And played on a badminton sized court with a net, uh, two inches shorter than a tennis net. You can play it with a paddle, a little bit bigger than a ping pong paddle and a little more durable wiffle ball. You can play it at either doubles or singles. The singles is one on one, double, the combination of two teams, two on two. It's growing for a number of reasons, a lot easier on the body and it's a lot easier to pick up. Most racket courts require hours and hours of lessons, but with pickleball, you can walk onto a court, pick up a paddle and within five minutes of learning how to play, you can play in a competitive game with your friends. It's a really fast paced sport which takes advantage of your quick hands and reflexes, but it's also strategic. It's like a chess match on a court. Pickleball is a great workout. It's fun for all ages and skill levels, whether you've been playing tennis your whole life or you've never picked up a paddle or racket before. Pickleball is a really social sport. Unlike tennis, you're really close to your opponent and your partner, which allows for more of a social environment on and off the court. And it's a super competitive sport with tournaments all across the nation, all Europe. If you want to learn more about pickleball and how it's played, go to play pickleball dot com.
Think that's something that's a lot better than.
Here in there, anyone can.
And, uh, and I also want to say, uh, if you want to learn about pickleball, don't go to pickleball dot com, whatever it was. Come out to the Raton High School tennis courts. Um, you need to get in the gate between eight and ten and we'll give you a racket and then you can start playing, uh, with us right away. Uh, we formed, uh, about two years ago. We're in the process of becoming five oh one C three corporation. And we've been playing ever since we started. Uh, we've played year round. That is also thank people, city and county that we can play in the winter because you see it's mostly a sunshiny sport. We currently have about eighty people a week. That's what our average is, uh, of playing. Um, it has gone down a bit, uh, you know, because we are forced to, uh, set up the courts and take them down. Every day we play, so people are confined to the times that we play, uh, for their play. Uh, and that's what we are attempting to do, uh, here and with the city is to get what's called dedicated courts. Instead of playing on a high tennis courts, of playing, uh, on a scenic slab somewhere. We're trying to get a facility here in our own that will benefit the region, uh, and all the way up into plus having this county. We have about ninety members on our, um, team reach group, uh, which is where we schedule play. We have fifty plus members and you'll see just from the folks that are sitting there, many of us live in the county, including myself. Uh, as opposed to just the state. We have, uh, players from the Philippines, uh, Steve that there, uh, has joined us. Um, there's a group of, uh. Employees here in, uh, Raton, uh, that have come from Philippines and see play daily with us. Uh, we have Ratonians. We have people coming in from almost every state that, um. People from the United, Kansas, Texas, Colorado, Arizona, California, just all over. And as they schedule a trip. They contact us to see if, uh, they can play. We approached the city about, uh, ninety months ago to see if we could, uh, get dedicated courts. Because we had a private owner that was interested in. Because a founder of his place, uh, with us, not only was he interested in providing pickleball courts, but he was interested in. Fixing the El Portao path lot, uh, right category from the courthouse. Um, this, uh, board was made up for that location, which is no longer on the. On the discussion with the city, uh, so it won't be there, but this kind of shows you, uh, what a schematic would look like on that block. It would have taken about sixty percent of that, um, area. Uh, as you see, it would have been, I think, a hundred and sixty. By a hundred and sixty by three hundred feet and that would give eight courts, um, for, uh, for pickleball. As I said, the city has decided that they are not going to pursue that venue. And so we've shipped it years and last, uh, two or three months. And they have suggested, as they had all along, really, uh, the rounding house part. Which is where they fight the regional fights. Uh, we're, we're happy with wherever they, uh, might be, um, and that looks be where it would be now. I'll hand you out. I think I have that's your five. Thank you. Um. They have, uh, we, we have shown them, uh, understanding that this all course in there, where we make the eight course to fit. And we've seen at this point is minimal to that. The city, uh, had set by five hundred thousand dollars, uh, for recreational use this fiscal year. And we thought that we were going to be included in that. Uh, it turns out that they are now going to take the majority of that money to redo the bathrooms at the Little League softball and the Brelling Field. That incredibly is going to take probably four hundred thousand dollars of that, uh, recreation money. They are trying to get a grant from the DFA that will cover that, uh, but they're not sure that it will. So we are, uh, as we have been for the last year and a half, attempting to look for other funding sources that can help the city. Uh, and bolster this incredible economic, um, boom to our community. And that's why we're here. Uh, we, uh, would ask that the county consider, uh, an amount, uh, if. If the city comes up with funding for this, it will not be in, in total. Uh, so we're asking that the county consider, uh, an amount to. Whether it be matched or just add into the city fund. Because we believe that we draw from the county, uh, as well as from the region and, and the entire country. So today we have a couple other speakers, um, but we have basically two requests. Uh, number one, to work with the city for funding, appreciate, um. County Commissioner Chairman, uh, Spike Hill did come to one of our meetings with the city, uh, had some great ideas. And so he understands what their process is at this point, um, but that he called one. And if there are funds available, that the county participate in this effort. Secondly, um, the first winter that we played, the city allowed us to play at the convention center indoors during the winter. Uh, they withdrew that, uh, commission at the end in the spring. And so we were forced to scramble, uh, last winter for another place. Uh, the county stepped up and allowed us to use the event center, uh, and Fred Martinez, uh. Allowed us to be in there in the mornings and make sure that we, uh, got those up. Um, I feel like we were very good stewards of the facility. In that I think three separate times over the winter, we were the first ones to find, uh, frozen bikes that could have caused some. Fairly serious damage because I don't think Mr. Martinez stood out there every day. And we also painted plates, uh, sweep it, grind one bit. And, uh, we believe that we're, we're good stewards of, uh, the event center that he would allow us to. Uh, use that again in these a daily for a couple hours every morning. Uh, we set up nets there unless it has a function. Fred lets us know, um, Ms. Strong let us know and then we would take everything down and, and make it, uh, available for that event. So with that, I'd like to turn it to, uh, Val for. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Valerie Sora. I am a retired student, retired in the state of Mexico. And a student of the Grand Supreme Court time. Sam's college, she came back. I just wanted to talk a little bit about pickleball and I listened to the, you know, went over a lot of things, um, trying to be. Health benefits is really good cardio if you want it to be. If you don't, you don't have to run and jump. It's great for all ages and we see all ages within our group. I think our old members eighty four years old. Uh, it helps you stay sharp, um, your shooting making, your balance, your skills. I think the biggest thing that I've noticed for me is the health aspect of playing pickleball. You really get out there and meet people which you would have never met before and you actually are interacting with other human beings and not your phone. For a few hours every day. I think that's fantastic. And I really like seeing all the young people that are out there playing. I noticed when we go out of towns dedicated course nowadays, I'm going to give you for some of the people there are under forty. And they're interacting with each other and they're actually talking and creating, uh. Time with each other and making friends instead of just texting someone or, you know. Getting on the computers to do emails. So I really like that it is bringing that aspect of human interaction back into our use. Now are all familiar to people. I have met people that I would have never met and in a fashion, it kind of has renewed some of my faith in humanity, not all of it, but somewhat of. Uh, and you really kind of learn what others, that others abilities and playing. You know, we welcome anyone. We have all different kinds of people to play and it's a joy to meet them and I think this would be very thing for the region. I think it would draw a lot of people in from all parts of the county and everybody else in the United States. To give you confidence, you leave feeling good. To give you confidence, you leave feeling good because you have some of the orphans going. And you feel good about yourself after you play, it just makes you feel young again. Uh, it satisfies that love of sport and athletics if you miss that. I didn't realize how much I missed it, I always liked sports in school. I've always been a somewhat active person, but yeah, it's really just made me realize how much I miss group sport. Uh, to sum it up, pickleball is fun, it's easy to learn, anyone can play, it's very healthy, it's super social. And you can play your entire life, you can start young and you can play. As long as you feel like, man, and you can play and whatever you decide you want to play out. It's not hard to respect it as one of the greatest sports ever and one of the greatest sports that's really gonna start moving up is college. High school, I'll, I'll bet you in another ten years we'll have high school pickleball teams, college pickleball teams, maybe even Olympics, it's amazing. Uh, for me, it's like recess in grade school. Remember how fun that was, you go out and play most of the time in a group, that's what it reminds me of, uh. It's like going out for recess, makes you feel young. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Steph, with JP. Stephanie, Jensen, and Ryan, thank you for letting me have your time and, you know, buddy, we love to have you.
Um, could we do the other video, the growing video piece?
Sure.
Thank you. So that is uh, that was the panel, and I have two. Two things to talk about, one is, um, JP and I have been a lot of places. Turn this, we have played a lot of those springs, we did two slider, we did this, we did two Saturday, we went to Albuquerque. Uh, we've kind of been all over playing um, in these tournaments and most of the time we're Raton pickleball um. Shirts, you know, letting them know that we're from Raton, whether it's the symbol, uh, we want to strike here in the forest, they didn't have to. But um, that's when, um, so, you know, we've been to a lot of places and then other thing we needed to talk about was. That we've been told that um. That they don't feel that pickleball is an economic driver. Um, you know, and I wanted to share with you, I mean, uh, earlier about. The different people that are coming in and playing with us and how many times we go to tournaments and you get asked, you have dedicated courts, you had a tournament. Um, and unfortunately we had to say, no, not yet. Um, but I did get some, oh. Random angry, and this was from, um, for folks, and there were mainly. Seven Ratonians that went to play in those, and we had less, with one or more facilities. Um, and he says, um, are all ready, a big tournament, this race, maybe twelve thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Um, received six thousand six hundred and five, and then the people are ready to see, and it's already increased from a hundred and fifty one players. Four thousand seven hundred major sponsors, twenty five million tourists for fifteen hundred from Simon Oster and two hundred and fifty dollar t-shirts. Or said, just six thousand, almost one thousand a dollar, for one time that people have purchased. That will be used during the year, so that was a hundred and fifty one players, we know that seven of us are Raton. So all of us had to find some place to stay, you know, in camp, there's a lot for the team. Um, so we had to eat out, we had to shop, we had courses for those to be able to place, we had it as a hot springs, um. So when we go to the places, we know what we invest in the community. Um, and so hoping that if we have a tournament, which honestly we need eight courts to run. A good tournament, you don't want to do a tournament badly because then people won't show up. You need to get people on the porch, they need to play, they need to move on to the next game. Um, and so that's why we really are requesting eight courts and we really see it as a economic driver and. I don't know about that for the member, but. I don't feel younger when I'm, I feel like. But, so I just wanted to share this information, do you have any questions? Anything?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you all for your presentation, uh. My first question is, what do you anticipate the cost of putting a course to play?
Well, that was the same to speaker, our next speaker, who does some uh, research on this and of course.
A lot of all research, my question is.
We've gotten. We have been, we have always been living in companies and operating around Colorado, mostly out of the Denver area. Uh, I lived in Albuquerque and there wasn't really much around there, which is socks, Albuquerque, buildings, many courts. But the cost, the lowest cost we have, pretty much keep out. And as for this exact. John, let's ask here, it's a eight course, it's offensive dividing all eight courses, it's a community gathering area in the middle. You know, it's everything that you see there. The highest quote we got was four hundred and eighty thousand, I believe. So it's dependent on the company, the lowest quote that they got was. They were out of the Denver area, of course, but they were actually ones that did the courts in. And one of the springs that we planned, and they're eating the courts. So certain, that would lie on, we know what they're called in work is. And the first course that I went with. One of those companies also did, it was one hundred and twenty thousand, their courts are cracking up. We're gonna have to do maintenance on active this week. So they had a lot of words um, inside the purple thing, so. And they went with. Bank of any different strengths, so. You know, depending on the company, just because they're the cheapest, certainly they're not a great company. And just because they're very expensive, also they're meaning that they're gonna do best job. But just a day after your break. Anywhere from three hundred to two thousand. To four hundred and eighty, well, it's just dependent on who you do it. To do it, I mean, you can do it, it's all at home. None of them want to do the same, but. The three hundred and sixty thousand we got was, there is a price for the quality of work that we actually play on in those areas.
Can you, other question?
Do you have any obligation as a pro to?
I'm sorry.
And the city obligated it was.
Not. Any at all, they rejected what we might be able to get to us, so they did not. Uh, come through and actually said this is what, most of it depended on the grant, whether they received the grant.
Do you.
They still have heard from.
You know, much that aggregation amount was that very moment, but we.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner, that, so as I said, they, the city set aside five hundred thousand dollars for recreation. The D F A initiated this grant about a month ago, uh, with a very quick.
Great, I'm sorry.
With a very quick uh, turnaround time is what they said. And uh, so the city spent their answer as whether they're going to get D F A grant, which would pay for the bathrooms. Uh, and free up that money very quickly, uh, Mr. Correille was at that meeting when Mr. Barry expected it because the. Funds have to be extended and needed, the project completed by June. So they expected a quick turnaround, it needed to be a shovel ready um, project, which the bathrooms apparently are. If that happens, there will be four hundred thousand dollars that the city. Almost exclusively, I believe, will put towards pickleball. Their agenda tonight includes the first step of getting their in-house engineer. Have to look at a pricing uh, amount for what we're proposing, so. If, if they, if they get the grant, I expect that, when we plan instead. I hope that there might be four hundred thousand dollars in their till and we would be asking very far less in the county. If they don't get that D F A grant, um, one city commissioner has just on side uh, said. Maybe there would be two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the general funds available.
And Commissioner, just kind of like, I'm gonna be, uh, intended, they, they talked about, uh. So city by, um, for a while, have their engineering services to keep on how. Get it all, get it built, but I pretty much just really study it, and then uh, kind of back. I'm gonna present that to, to the pickle court and then that county would uh, be asked to.
We have. The Aons, uh, Commissioner, yes, thank you, um, it's very informative, um. As far as like this, we're uh, anticipating that we want to use the. Events are again, um, was there any case involved with that last year, you know, due to the county or the counties?
No. And quite honestly, uh, Commissioner, we wouldn't be able to pay any of that work, so, uh, we would be without a ten indoor venue and I think. The faces of the first three, um. Three rows there would be downcast, um. The, the reason the city withdrew their permission was because of their events. Uh, that they had, they uh, did not want the tape, because we take, in the convention center we take three courts. The event center only fits two, um, we, we take the. Convention center floor, which is their wooden floor and they believe there was a residue, uh, we disputed that, but um. They didn't like that and they wanted it picked up every event they had, no matter what it was. Uh, we thought that they were pretty um, discreet and didn't really bother anybody, but they didn't mind that. At the event center, uh, we taped there, but it's a concrete floor, as you know. Uh, it, it made absolutely no marks, we use a blind tape that is like painter's tape. Uh, and whenever there was an event, uh, Mr. Martinez would explain to us whether he thought that he didn't pick up or not. Um, I think there were two events that he asked us to uh, pick it up for, um, and otherwise he let, let us just leave it there.
Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Got any questions?
Yes, thinking with regard, and uh, this, you know, I don't think it would be an issue, but I think that would be a small, no, it's all. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner.
Better than the iron section of the table. The cable lanes.
For. Our insurance, we have. Five things from A M C, but I will be asking for your people a day at the amount of ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, and at the bottom, there's also a little piece number. Finally, we have the rest of the team that I am recommending to mine, because this application exceeds three hundred and five minutes.
Any questions? Don't wish to.
So all of these are in the base. The top, I guess, the one.
Um, I have no question, all of them didn't put it in the group.
Would you?
Okay, so we have back in that one.
Commissioner, thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you.
When I think of expression action, I intend service agreement between upper control lead. There are the operations, so it's in the main, and while they're all known intentions.
Pretty, um, this is just a normal annual contact that you renew with accurate inputs. Um, and you look at the remember, going for the bronze packet and we always do and we're gonna do a one year contact. And again, as long as you think it's worth, um, or cameras, and so. You provide a teammates, walk room, and with employee talk to.
Commissioner, Commissioner.
No questions.
Uh, yes, I can, um, can it, is, do these. Uh, prices that are in a significant version, they increase, are they?
Um, I have, I think, you know.
I have a question, I want, what I'm taking, just what I'm saying is in here.
Whatever.
And then, um, are you gonna be paying monthly, annually?
Sorry. Annual.
Uh, I have a question on this, my, I always come to county, the best one, the commission to have this. So if you're an insurance to me, I always want it for us to be as the county's main vision and third, where there's a regulation. Um, that's evident in this contract, it says a bunch of bad increments. Uh, I can, it's just a common piece, uh, I kind of want, and it's easy to be across the. Kind of one of those. The reason, if you follow your, yeah. That's true, and, yes, in one section, it's simple, I don't know. This is the, I guess, from this issue. Which I really like, they always do what they want, the price change was. Uh, when is this contract start next month? Next month? And uh, we're gonna decide today on what our meeting is for next month, Friday. So when you say next month, uh, Mr. Manager, do you mean with the end of the month? You know what this maybe doesn't.
Please, I believe, I believe it was that he.
Member, yes.
I believe, but I can be wrong.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, my purpose would be to understand the awfulness and that there are eight reasons. Uh, before I go, my concern is, I don't know how it impacts our operations if we go out of contract, because. My anticipation is our meeting, our regular meeting will probably be a month sometime, historically has been. Uh, closer to Thanksgiving than the beginning of the month.
If you feel okay with moving this to the end of today, I can go out and get the answer from the price change and make that be a declaration. I don't know, that's a lot.
Which, uh.
Uh, I'm sorry, since there's been a stable that for a while, we couldn't, uh. I'm not working. For, I have to see this.
The longer term motion to fail the item. You know, I had heard. Between item twenty one and item twenty two. So, second, so the second I heard.
Mr. Carr.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Making machine. Moving on, item number twelve is the second act and group ID service contract and the whole acts in. Item number seven act and cancel R and B twenty twenty three, I think it's a three ID services.
Um, so the reason why I'm asking to come to check with the R and B is to handle our R and B. Um, we only had one person turn in a proposal, and they did not qualify for it. Um, due to not turning in proper paperwork. The word is not being taken.
It is. Did we have any other applicants where they are? Um, same for the discussion.
Mister Carr.
Yes. Yes. Moving on, time to the ball search and add to the group ID service contract. All that scanning on this, so there's students that's in this place.
And this would be a contract that we have with on the our ID supervisor. Um, he is an independent employee, but an independent contractor employee, and that's simply our.
Commissioner.
The only thing that changed through the contract was the pay increase.
I did ask questions. This goes back to making sure the county is protected. I I like it a lot, and I think it has a great service. Uh. I guess I was curious, what was the difference between an independent contractor and independent company? Or I don't know, it's June, sir. Can you please help me, Commissioner?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh. Good morning, uh, Chairman Trillo and Commissioners and Madam Clerk and County Manager.
Hold hold on, Jim.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Andrew.
Yeah, uh, can you hear me, sir?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Uh, good morning, uh Chairman Trillo, Commissioners and Madam Clerk and County Manager. I I believe that the Chairman Trillo asked me about the legal question, whether, you know, contract employee versus independent contractor. So uh, I. I think that, you know, the short bottom line is that the the contract employees are governed by Corpus County personnel policy. In that uh it. Clarifies that the contract employees serve at the pleasure of the county uh commission. And then also not entitled to grievance and disciplinary procedures. And uh, I believe that the example of the contract employees are the employees of the YES and DWI programs we already approved before. Uh, so basically, the county has a control over contract employee such as, you know, income tax withholding and performance issues. While independent contractor got solely governed by the contract. So contract employees uh was established uh in some portion by the stat uh state funding agencies requirement or issues. So uh based upon my interaction uh with Virginia and County Manager's Office, it appears that the. Uh, Amadeo has been uh considered as a county employees uh uh similar to the yet employees of the YES and W uh. DWI programs, so those are the, you know, two distinctive portions uh of that, the contract employees and independent contractors, sir.
Also, is there any kind of insurance requirements for a contract employee here?
Uh, I believe, no, sir. I think, as you remember, in when we approved the contract uh with employees of the YES and DW uh DWI programs. Uh, we did not uh require them to have insurance because your uh increase uh, you know, co- you know, county's uh. Uh responsibility more, meaning that we have to pay more than uh to get the insurance. So therefore, uh, we believe that the we cannot uh have that the insurance in place. But however, they are contract employees of the county, so it's a little different from the, you know, having. Uh, insurance requirement for the uh independent contractor, sir. But the county can still monitor their performance and also discipline them, and also uh they can be subject to the uh termination without having any cost.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes, sir.
So here was the special about. Uh, my other point is, I mean, we need to be looking and diligent on these contracts because. You know, it it was uh the commission of the county is open. Uh, I I question, who, I mean, please look up these contracts, I think they're. We need to make corrections on page four, you move, spread your public school. Uh, minimize all day by saying municipal school, should leave all ice county. Also, page six. So the city did, which I mean, the county was. I mean, many corrections. Uh, to the agreement with those. I don't care if it's going forward, commissioners, very.
But but I mean, the question maybe those generally was the increase, but.
With the. And if you look at the uh contract, not only. Um, you really reduce the contract or reduce hours, so we. Follow the whole thing down.
I I can just. So the hourly rate is going up, but the overall contractor amount is probably going to be yes. Um, so 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 at the hourly rate, kind of it brings me up to previous I keep. My interest, you guys are not paying the. Um, you kind of make machines and stuff like that, or really it's better than what you did. That's why I want you. But I want to think of not moving higher, just to know any rate. And it's not to exceed. And Mister Chairman, last question, first of all, I'd like to say that your role or the knowledge and advice, that's so that's not an issue to me. Uh, the things that you've done for the county in the past few years since you've been charged are. Are huge step forward technologically, so you're so much to be very, very appreciative of this, Commissioner. But the buyer's agreement wasn't the amount of not to exceed fifty nine ninety nine. He's a town of particularly breaking their laws. It was the same, not the prior agreement, right?
The prior agreement did not facilitate any.
So the prior agreement didn't have enough to exceed.
Well, as uh Richard has said, uh, and I agree with you. Um, I think on Dale, uh, his service to the county has been exemplary, and. Every department there, or like the office that I talked to. Um, has expressed um the professional services that he has provided. Um, his contract is coming up again, we've done everything appropriately. Um, Richard did add in that. That part of the village. Um, at the same time, um, the reason that his boss isn't going to go up. We have increases hourly rate, we definitely lose. Um, the amount of hours is going to be worth it. And just so you know, that was at um on Dale's request. Um, he's a hard time, he's got. Uh, like up there, he wanted more. Work them off as well. We are training, and I was going to break off, and training them like this, because our IT tech. And that was after part of the overall plan was sort of on the day to get tail up to up to speed on this. And um. I hate to say, but at some time, um, Dale was probably going to um.
And and I believe I. I gave I give a timeline, maybe I tend to drop or I would be go forward. I'm looking probably by this time next year, I is maybe looking to. We'll see, we'll see with the goal, but I like to. Maybe I have some submission. On that one, but again, all of the new accounting situation where. Um, you guys are taking care of, so I'll make sure that that's. For any any kind of absence or any need, that will be taken care of prior. But that's kind of my plans, and he's bringing you for now, and then continue to train, train him. If he's the first in line or what the process is, and then um. Thank you, the commissioners. Well, I'm not special, and we can answer this with uh something here. Do we know the amount that is signed? I was trying to go through. It's embedded, I think, in the manager's.
I don't believe in having a budget last year, but. Or we're going to let it go over, so he has the last year, and we shouldn't be like over it. So I totally think it will change, and you three over the name of myself, um, you doing a little bit of calculating, but fully for us. And it should, he should be right around the same area that he was already making, good or be less.
And and I believe, I I don't want to back here, but I believe that the position, if they were a county employee, was sixty five thousand. It was not a question. If if I'm not speaking wrong, like what he was bringing in that was. All of your time was six, actually, I'm sorry, Mister Kim, by the time. It was uh. Currently budgeted for forty two thousand dollars. Which. And and again, you know, we need to actually know, but you've already put your purse. Or only, this is out of September period. Or are you able to budget and uh forty to this? We're only very much into the year, four months this year. They have, well, this is ID services flat five, it's the name of the G O thousand.
Okay, but that is a separate, or is that?
Oh, that's not a space.
It was the line item is that um off the top of my head, that you you did, but I didn't get that until anyway.
And yeah, I I believe that's a bunch of reports that she gives me for a breakdown, we showing the story. Uh, we know it was going to be a number like you.
If you have your um, if you're able to afford the expenditures, you're going to get the expenditures and. For the number. Yeah.
Okay. This is.
Not the blue, the list were, I have a list of all the checks.
Oh, I I pull that up.
And that'll tell you what line item it'll be under, and then it'll tell you which order before either of them. By looking at that check, I think that we watch, but.
Because we've got another line item. Other than telephones, large and covered except for full-time positions, there's a benefit to office.
It's going to be the commission's, the beginner one oh one, oh one oh one, something.
Office under commission.
One oh one, oh one oh one. I want to say thirty percent.
I'd like to have all this. There it is. Eighty. Okay, so we found it. So currently the budget is for eighty thousand dollars. Which we know, we're in a contract, we can't go. Sixty, so we have enough money, but. All of the motions approved to break the contract. So move, say.
Mister Carr.
Yes. Yes, yes. Thank you. Moving on, on time into the thirteen session action action, as we've been pointing to three, actually, anyone. Reservations for any I still can't make twenty twenty four legislative priorities. Go ahead, uh, Mister Chairman, uh, thank you for putting this on there. I think this is an important part of how we need to support all of the items. Uh, we'll benefit both next time directly, most of them related to the sheriff's office and the detention center. But also to our EMS services, those are the priorities of the association of counties of Mexico. Um, uh, there are details in there related to where else, anything like that, but basically, those are the three agencies. That Mexico counties have more organizations trying to obtain finances from the state legislation. Uh, to benefit, and uh, as again, uh, coax kind of will then from all of these issues. In my opinion, so I I think it's important that we support our association with counties of their records, so long we are on behalf. To obtain funds for uh, you know, at least there. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner, any questions? I don't have any, thank you, Commissioner, for your, I know you hold the the seat of that. Appreciate the work you do. All entertainment group, so move, second, so I need a second. Yes. 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 Moving on, item fourteen, second action reservation, twenty twenty three dash six. Revolution supporting the rights of citizens of the state of New Mexico, a complex county to seek to regress through. The use of the recommended process as approved, not by the constitution of the state of New Mexico. And then we have some decisions here in the audience, and we can be there for. I also received the support for uh and city commission, uh, commission charity. More so is what we have to be in sort of this. Um, I'm supportive of this, it goes, goes to. It is not a whole day right to rent land according to the N S. Position. The next is taken a speech. Is there any other, how many on here?
If you have questions. We don't know, I'm so good as well. I think it's why. Just supposed to.
Thank you. Uh, my other problem is that it's important that we're in position, or we have to read for certain with this, and these are constitutional items. And our state government should be required, if you want to uphold, whether it's in favor or not, because they are the constitutional items. Well, we have got to that, if you have anything to say, and I'm uh kind of in favor of this. Simply asking the governor and our legislature to divide by the state constitution. Thank you. See, as a brother on the English, agree, so move, second, so I need a second.
Mister Carr, yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, thank you all. Uh, being on time with these second action, that we're able to have decisions for. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioner, Dave, you know, one of the arts. Okay, so. You should receive your targets, uh, to. Number. Uh, they may share the system. Of course, very officer and other uh whole time. Uh, if you put on a generation, every single brand, which is all the way around the agenda though. Correct example is that's why I got. Be approved.
Um, go ahead, and that's what we do, you're talking about this, and I think all of the positions are definitely needed. But we were uh, we mentioned earlier about, you know. The fact that. It's in our purpose, obviously, that is the case in the county, because it's the huge county. Um, and with all that, the additional, the. Duties that come along with having bigger departments, so I think this is.
Uh, yes, thank you, Kevin, thank you. I I guess my concern is we we added two additional deputies in this year, but we just prior. Uh, so. Uh, so this one, your sheriff's offices as more deputies and at least five been involved in the county. And I, I'm concerned while we're adding three more, and when you say temporary. Um, so how long is this temporarily for? Oh, the grant is, uh, I don't think it's for a three year. We're gonna realize, oh, this is about a grant where the first year we get a hundred percent, the second year we pay fifty percent. I mean, exactly, we're looking at a second, the third year it's like twenty five percent or a bit. They, I mean, the grant base, so in such point years, the county's gonna, year two, the county will have to come up with fifty percent. And then there are three seventy five percent. And then is there a requirement to retain these people beyond that three year period? There is not a requirement to do so, however, the people are down. My wish is exactly, uh, will be retiring within a timeframe, our greatest division, obviously, they're hurting to take all of those needs. Uh, there's four other that will be all of them retired in this ten to year. And uh, on your, uh, Commissioner, we're, right, we're just for a question. Uh, here, there's a uh, court security position, the UN can be paid full time deputy directly, it's actually. We can figure out, or we figured out a certain way to uh, have that position. As a way of position, they get unlicensed at a level of their laws. So it's still the law, if you have a stick of everything. The uh, license. So the grant will pay the sensitive, basically, you know, about the county two hundred thousand dollars a year. Um. Maybe a little more. The grants can pay a hundred percent of that. Um. Or I'm saying. What kind of frames, is that, is that going to be as the one column, does the grant apply to July one? Or does it apply to when we start using it as part of the late the, the year, so this grant is similar to the last one. It came out six months later, so anyway, I'm tired now, we can. Put all of that funding towards, so like, this year. Do you do thirty of the next? Do you do thirty of the next year? And. What is your anticipation, uh, Sheriff Parker? How long do you think it will take to ability submission? Uh, as a center, I have two people in the application, also, I can, well, I can get those court security positions together in the position. And if that early, the student and I always do, I get the first thirty and like, consider if I expect. We will not have a reply to the next year. And yeah, I guess this question really, you know, my long term concern is obviously the third year, this is in a banner, uh, safe thing for us. So public, my concern is, um, in the long term. You know. Uh, I mean, it wasn't that long ago, left it three years, uh, pretty comfortably. But we were letting people go in the city because we didn't think we had the budget for it and. My opinion, we let go a couple of pretty strategic people. And uh, this year, we added, I don't know, the total F D E increases six, I think. And um, I guess I'm just concerned about. You know, I, I wish this, I was here to answer quite long term viability of this, how can we put us in a position of one where. We are uh. Are putting ourselves in a financial pinch. And number two, you know, I, I mean, I need to, I would like to understand, sort of, ask long term viability of this. Whether the county is going to have money to sustain these people, because even though the grants were the three tiers. I mean. I don't want, you're going to hire these people and say, in three years, then they let you go. This. By also anticipating several retirements, that I will envision that all of them that should have been kept up. I'll report this, and how would they transfer, let's say that. You have someone retired, they would transfer out of this program until after a year or three, right? So even if somebody retired in year two. So that would, that would free up those that currently budgeted funds. Or at least fifty percent. So they're going to be in this program for the next three years. Yes. Regardless. And there's no requirement going three years, you can know if they're not, I read, uh, a lot of this requires, so it's a whole age of operation that I want. In state. I believe. We need to do. We have enough of a position that we have an entire rush and maintain. Uh, maintain. So is there a way to worry this of that at the end of the three year program? That, I mean, I don't want to do a budget every year, but that's, these F D E. I mean, we're going to have. Uh, I'm just concerned three years from now. If these are in the budget, and have that three years, we're going to create a new cycle here, maybe else, there should be some of the bigger F D E, but. Um. I think these need to be reaggressed and reapproved, because if we're doing this temporary F D E. Then at some point, if we're going to try and retain these people and keep the same number, you know, if you're, if you're with these, if your people retire and your F D E goes back down to like where it's at. Then um. As people retire or not, I, I don't think we should maintain these three. Um, beyond the three years, I mean, I think they need to be handled differently, there's any way that in a motion, we can word it to ensure that. These three F D E will be, have to be reapproved after the um. After the um, grant is completed. I think there's going to have to be like that anyways, since they're temporary. There's anything that can be concluded, and then, so what does that mean to be per, is that mean that we have to? I mean, I just thought about it, I'm afraid we'll get lost if we shut up three years from now. Or even next year, what is Sam, I mean, are we going to have them designated in the project separately? Um. Those are all questions that we've talked about. Commissioner, then, we're going to. Well, uh, it, and I appreciate where you're coming with the mission, where it means to say, some of the take questions that I had for here, Parker, we discussed the. Um, I, I think, because of the general, I can discuss that, it's a. I just want to create an issue, but I mean, we are, we're doing it as temporary decision, so. I don't have a problem with it. Um, here in order, if you like, um, I'll be back from vacation. Um, next week, you know, I can sit down with our financial specialists and maybe tell them where it's flying goes. Um. Perhaps, uh, some, that it comes, is we all would probably identify them separately or differently, like that, um. Maybe, well, there are all the options, and I think we can present that, you know, I don't think it's going to be that difficult to, uh, basically establish a. Something um, that. They'll keep track of these, just like you get a grant, or even else, sort of, we know them, uh, in your mind, so. And here three is coming up. And then, uh, I will keep it ready and advised with these separate positions. And I can count that, so under each corporation, I have key for the report. So I can tell you who hired under the law, and if you. And like, how people can compare to this, and what I hired to look into, and what you can put together. Reiterate further. Well, I'm already tracking that in books. Okay, that's good there. So would that be something that we could just, um, include? I mean, because really, as far as the F D E goes. It really is primarily involved with the budgeting costs and, and uh. Uh, my thought about it already creates a separate way of reaching for age, putting those, uh, slide out. I can go on, I have a lot, and I can, but I don't, for the free corporation, so these are some of the problems, yes. I mean, first, I haven't said, I just. You can always find it, it is, I, I didn't hear anybody, but I think we all do. I hope that matters. If this is totally set upon, then I, I think that, but I don't understand that funding, which. Um, because. The, the last grant that you got, that was in there, that was for um. Most people, right, that was for hiring and retention, which could be used by our offices. This one only for hiring, but we just tell the museum, one of the bonuses, I think, I can do this on, but. For my many affairs, very individual, okay, that's why I didn't relate it to the other, because Seattle was using bonus, the, 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 for hiring, this. Okay, uh, that was simply the guidance that I need that. We can have uh, the people, the knowledge upon point that it is a temporary position, that has our intention. Uh, here, only bottom line. Okay, uh, any final questions that have been satisfied, Mr. Chairman? Thank you.
Mr. Kerr, yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you, thank you. Moving on, I have a specific action, whereas we didn't, twenty twenty three dash thirty seven, accepting one of the grant. Okay, fine. Uh. This is the operation, uh, received this year for the three hundred ninety three dollars of the dollar. Um, that operation number, uh, even a kind of an option that's provided. Uh, first year, never ten, two hundred twenty five thousand, for the first year. Fifty percent, the about two one, one hundred twelve thousand five hundred for the second year. And twenty five, fifty six thousand people, which is the amount of this system, actually, obviously, might, you know. And he said, he personally. It is, I think. Commissioner, there, four questions, Commissioner. Uh, yes, Chairman, uh, Sheriff Parker did some, but I can, at this time, I make your. This is. A total brand, you want to come one of them back to you. Yes. And it's absolutely fine. Okay. Yeah, I didn't, it was an extension of the one, because I know that. Flattered brand, at least, which was presented by the. The Department of Commerce or Legislature, that would send to be a multi year program. But the, the way they did it is actually totally independent, France, you know, play into each other, correct? And actually, it's a whole separate operation, or allegation that. Put it back. Thank you. And sort of, I have a question. Uh, see, there's a, I can wish to approve, someone. Give me your second.
Mr. Kerr.
Yes. Yeah. Yes. Uh, moving on, I have under seventeen. Expression Act, and it's in the next, sort of, the L G B, our appropriation, got it, amendments.
Good morning, I'm just here to answer your question that you might have, the amendment that was presented to you as time of the Department of Finance, Global Government Project. And I thankfully amended the reporting, I brought to current capital appropriations, not really too quarterly. And reporting under the F A's budget formulation, yeah. So then, then relations to the appropriations for Popeye's County Event Center and Popeye's County Shares C.
Commissioner, four questions. Uh, yes, so this is then related to the fifty thousand dollar contribution that we received from, uh. A person that. Send to the sentence and the sheriff's department, we received.
Yes, the little man, those agreements to move, uh, reporting, I'm not like, literally, and here they're using during the F A's.
And we use, I guess, that fifty thousand dollar strategic, I was suddenly impressed, we were going to use that for the backup generator for. The uh, towers, that we, I think that's what we put in. Uh, when he applied the appropriations, I guess my concern is that. We're expanding on what the appropriation for the installation state of the previous. Because I don't, I think originally, it was something a hundred thousand dollars. And um, I never got a good answer from the representative, Mr. Hyatt, he. After, uh, committed to a hundred thousand dollars that he negotiated a fifty. But um, uh, we did turn in paperwork for that to be for the backup generator. For the communications tower on, uh, not all of the, but the other, but, you know, yeah. Or where it is. Um, so I guess that's my only concern is, is that, whether they will turn in. Or are we seeing on the appropriations they worked, as they say, now it's going to be extended? I would have to review that, sure, can you give me?
Well, in reviewing, going to be able to work on, Joe is more familiar with it than I am at this point, but the one for the Popeye's County Event Center renovation, because it was in the amount of forty five thousand dollars. It says to plan, design, renovate, and put it the event. And uh, the two appropriations that, that is in regards to our, let's go on page three of that amendment.
Let's just, Sheriff, there are no agreements.
The Department of Finance is requiring us to their new reporting, so, um, and I think there's need, they'd be, um, reporting timelines, all the press board. Um, they did say that any other recording going over, um, all the great, they would, would, we're at the next quarter.
Thank you. True. Yeah, I, I just want to. I mean, I see that, I guess. I know when we turn in the paperwork, we're still in Canada. Okay, what happened? Yes, man. All of your motions approved. There's three seconds. All second. And then, look.
Mr. Kerr, yes, Commissioner.
Okay.
Can you?
Yes. Moving on to. I'm going to thirty eighteen, Special Act, Local Government, House, Senate, help. E W I grant, three written, the one for the county, E W I program, number twenty four, dash fee, that, that, zero five. Between Department of Finance Administration, and Popeye's.
Good morning. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner.
I have.
I just wanted to clarify that, um. That we do not have a record of that on the, uh, commission. That may mean, oh, God, but they accidentally sent this to the Honorable Bob, we were. So, you know, the great, though, and he was, he's our spring career, and then, uh, separate here. No questions. I don't have any questions, do you have any? Please, so. Second, so who's saying, I put.
Mr. Kerr.
Yes. Yeah. Yes. Thank you. Moving on, I have nineteen seven, actual, I see, I likely, our station, let's do the location. Commissioner, we're going to. That on us. Um. I have seventeen. I have nineteen. And it's, the rules are, and. But, in part, meeting, we had discussed, we, we, we saw, I'm missing. That's why I have more, can you, at the end of it? Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, it's. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, it's that, uh, why I have this on the agenda, it's that. The uh. So I will tell you this, um, I made several attempts to advertise for our background, uh, this property was donated. To the county. Um. Several years ago. Were used as a fire prediction for the Black Lake area. And um. Prior to this property being donated, the solid waste was distributed across. I understand, we don't. In the Black Lake area. And um, it became problematic. Uh, during the winter, or collecting that solid waste because uh, two things, number one, the roads were not. Black, there was. Fortunately, the road was a mess, a relatively steep area for a solid waste truck to go in and pick up the uh garbage in the cans. And also the plowing of roads, the cans came problematic. Uh, so plowing the roads because then it would often get, uh, so we get plowed on with the cans. It would become unusable by the constituents and property, they insulated all the black like cans into this location with a private apartment class. And although the deed that uh, the land was ceded to the county, county actually owns land, but there is. A revision clause in the deed that says if property enters, not being used. Uh, or fire services, that property re- reverts back to the original property owner. Um, because of the solid waste issues we had since last November, which have been tremendous, as we all know. Um, referred to higher county managers, solid waste crisis. And it actually was that, I agree with that description. Um, the landlord uh has been. Receiving a lot of pressure from the public. To remove the solid waste from that donated property. Um, the last conversation that I had with the landlord. Uh, he asked that that solid waste be removed. Um. It's unfortunate that I have not been received to return a phone call from the landlord, I've made multiple phone calls. Uh, I haven't had a chance to talk to him because I do think the problem. Which was basically trash floating off the property was primary problem. Uh, can be resolved by this fence that needs to uh go up. And I think the fence would block the great majority of the trash. I don't think that's the only answer, but I also do believe that the cans that we're using. Need to be designed differently, and the biggest problem involves, we just didn't have a free funding for the trash. We needed, you know, the contract all for the trash we picked up in three days' week. And uh, even with previous, when I was first on the order, my first winter. We actually got an extra, we were, we get them to come pick up an extra day. Uh, during, for some two years in the spring break, which we, of course, had the heaviest volume of in the Black Lake area. Um. Unfortunately, for our current provider, we have not. Had that, they have not complied with the contract. They have not picked up when they're supposed to. They left full trash cans and many times for over a week. Um, without me pick up. And that combined with um, you know, the summer, the bears coming out. The old trash cans, fourteen people to leave. Trash on top of them or on the ground. Really was the cause of this crisis that we had. Um. But I think if we're going to solve the crisis. You know, I don't think the answer is go back out to the streets, we're going to run into the same problems we have, which is. The gray of the streets, the location of the trash cans, the winter snow. Is going to cause initial problems that we previously saw. Uh, by consolidating them. I do think that the. Uh, fence will solve seventy-eight percent of the issue, I'm not going to say it's solved a hundred percent. But I think the fence in combination with. Picking up trash cans out of the handful, not. Waiting um, until some schedule in time because. During the peak areas in Reno Valley, you don't exactly remember people. People are checking in and checking out on a daily basis, and when they do, when they check out, it's when they dump their trash and they're going to dump it in the stands. And just because they're all full, just because it's. Um, we're not supposed to pick up until two days, but that is, is not the right answer. We have to have a system that is going to pick up those cans when they're full. But that combined with this uh fence. I think will solve the majority of the problems. I did talk with the landlord that has fifty, the majority of the complaints. Uh, the, the people next door. And um. He did agree with me in that conversation that the sense would solve the great majority of those problems. So, um. You know, we haven't had any complaints in about three weeks now, maybe a little more, I don't know exactly how long it's been. But approximately three weeks, and it's because of the volume stuff. And the bears, even though the bears are filled out, bears aren't. Um, migrating as much as they do during some of us. So the bear issue is almost gone. Um, and uh, because of their restricted migrations. And the old crack fans issue is gone because they don't have the volume of trash that we do in the peak season. Uh, but I really think the sense does need to go up, I, I think it's an investment. I, uh, my hope was to ask Mr. Honey. Uh, for agreement to. Um. Let's put the fence up and make sure that this has been a help solve the problem. Again, uh, both myself, I think the county manager. And uh, the gentleman that owns property next door agrees that would be a great help to put this up. And we are quickly coming upon the uh winter months. Um, at this point. I, I think it's something we should move forward with, I know the commission voted to approve this previously. With an exception that we changed the um. That we changed the revision clause in the deed. Um, I don't see that happening in a timely manner, it's not going to happen, even if he agreed to do it, it would take us. A few months to go through that process, would be my guess. Um. I think we need to move forward with putting the fence up. Uh, our risk is that if for some reason. Um, we have to go through some form of litigation that we lose and we lose uh that property, which in my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, but I did ask June. About, I don't know, June so long, but uh. He may want to comment on it. I don't think that the way the revision clause is stated, that they can actually take the property back. Um. And um, it. Except it's a facility and used as a ventilation for the Black Lake. I think it'd be detrimental to the community. Um, if we attempted to change the location of those uh trash cans right now, just prior to the snow beating and, and. Uh, peak season where we can't really react to it mid-winter. Uh, it won't be too late, the ground will be frozen, we'll put this up, we decide we want to bring them back. And the other alternative is to not provide Black Lake solid waste service. And there's been talk of saying, well, the village Eagle Nest offered for us to put solid waste uh. Containers in their property, which I appreciate. But it's unrealistic for any of you that have been Reno Valley, to ask people that live. In um, Oppo one twenty, we're down uh south on four thirty-four, the ground of Eagle Nest. I think would cause tension. With the village invasion fire, because what we ended up doing is, we have our constituents going to try to dump their trash at the village invasion fire. And um, that's not really fair enough. Uh, because their constituents pay a considerable amount uh of money so that they're, and they struggle, to be honest, quite frankly, during peak seasons to keep their trash cans. Um. From not being full. The difference is and the reason it's not as big of a deal in Eagle Fire is they have a fence to cover their facility. So even when people come in and drop. Trash off, when the trash cans are full, they put it on top of the proposed by hand and open, and there's fence that contains. The trash that we didn't allow of, of a facility. So, all that said, um. My request is that the commission vote to approve. The fence to be put around the facility. Um, you know, I. If, if the, if Mr. Honey, who, by the way, is, I consider a personal friend of mine. If he chooses to um. To try and force us to remove the solid waste from there, I hope that he comes to that, but if he does. The cost of. Trying to do that's going to be much greater than the cost of the sense. And I think that if we put the fence up, we'll be able to prove. That it's going to reduce uh significant part of the issue, and if it doesn't. Um. Then we'll, we're, we're going to have to switch. We'll be forced to come up with some other solution for that, but at least this will prove out over. The upcoming uh Christmas and New Year period, which can really be the test period. As the impact that that fencing would have on the facility. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
I have to think there's any question that we need to answer around. That uh, that facility.
Good.
My, my problem is that if the previous meeting, we discussed that uh, when we build the new Black Lake subdivision, that that's. That location, that Mr. Honey is located. With the contingency that it remain a. Fire station. That we had discussed that that would then become storage for the lake, for the road department, for the uh county. So we're changing the purpose of that property. Mr. Honey is designated that it's to remain a fire station, and at that point, he can revert that, or the city can revert, revert that. With the revision clause that exists, um. You, you know, and you sit there and talk about a few thousand dollars, that much, well, that's a while, there's somebody that really makes money, they have a lot of money. Um, so I, you know, I, I don't have that, but we need it, um. We looked when I was the county manager for a different patient from that, because it's always been wrong. And a lot of the problem, like you say, you know, I do argue that it's because what I see hasn't been quite, it's reasonable, it's they need to. Um, maybe we need them to pick up every other day. And I think that would have tremendous. Um. But it is a difficult location that we opened. For all of those reasons you've stated, I won't restate them, but um. I just have a problem with putting the fence on this property that, yes, see, it was, but there's a big contingency on that, and. Um. Maybe we need a process, honey, in five. I don't know, I, I feel a lot better if we have. Like we originally, this is the very first, when we made motion. That we will put the fence up. Ending the uh. Change of the, the version in the deed.
And Kevin Andrew, let me know if I'm wrong, but I believe that the reason the state's been in contact with you about the. Location, that I mean to pull in anyways, or you attached to that?
You know, this is a complex issue, I appreciate, uh, Vice Care, uh, first comments, um. With the acknowledgement that this has been a significant issue. For quite some time. Um, I concur with everything that Commissioner Weir said. Um. The other issue, um, that Commissioner Weir did not mention. Is that the state has been monitoring us as well, and I've been. Hearing information with commissions on that. But the state is um. Was very positive when I told them we were looking at trying to get approval and get a fence around that property. And when I, I talked to the residents of the county store. Members right next to it, they were excited about a fence and. I had talked to Mr. Honey and uh, at the time, he felt putting a fence around it was uh, absolutely the, the best thing we could do. I still think that twelve thousand, uh, is an acceptable amount, but a fence on our property. Uh, I think it's going to be some time before we actually get another fire station. Uh, up in that area, we have to look at the, the reality of the situation there. And as long as we're using it, um, I had talked to. A little council as well, as long as we're using this fire station, I hope we're in pretty good shape. Um. And I, I would recommend to the board of county commissioners. Is there a chance, yeah, there's a, there's a chance. Um, that. There may be an issue, but we're in the business of taking chances, and I think this is a calculated. A risk, and I think it's, uh, I think it's the right thing to do. And I think that as we hit that fence up there, because we've all acknowledged that we're in need to stay out of this. Hopefully that will calm some of the issues and calm some of the tempers. And we'll actually start to realistically manage about the data. Once again, you define the year, I want to follow the year. In that area, uh, in the high mountains, we want to. Mission is where, uh, that area gets snow. Um, we discussed it with the airport, and so we do all equipment there. Um, that area is, there's not a lot of time left. So I would recommend that we pull the trigger on this, we move the fence and get a. I should, uh, secondary, the fence is also, it's not uh, going to be a wind hole in concrete. It's going to be a steel pole, which is going to be pounded into the ground, so realistically. I was informed by neighbors that uh, we need to remove the fence at some point, we don't, we don't have.
Thank you, that was going to be my, my comment there, that you agree to do it, we can always cut the. Another posts and say that. Um. I'll let it be in a motion to approve. The Black Lake Fire Station, that's your location. So. Yeah, isn't that clear? I'll second that. Am I clear?
Mr. Grant, no, the mission word.
Yes. Yes. Moving on to item number twenty, decision action, November and December twenty twenty-three, meeting dates. Commissioners, uh, inform the goal, maybe meeting points. For a month. Uh, in November and December, and also take into consideration on November, we'll need to also canvas those. Um, so, this map, with the fourteenth of November, be okay for NC votes. Commissioners, the seventeenth of November. Yes.
Yes.
So, and. That on February eight. On the nineteenth, fourteenth, NC, November. They very. And they already called by every machine at night. For our summer meeting. It's going to be the eleventh, the nineteenth, I have to. Twelve, twelve. The commissioner. Now, I think we should, on the twenty-sixth of this morning today. The, the, sorry, the. The, you know, the first. All right. Thank you for having me on Sunday call, I mean. Uh, there are no questions to approve. Well, the second.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Moving on.
Moving on to item number one, discussion for the others.
People back.
Uh, between between. Between item number ones.
Because here, here's, uh, Miguel, um, you know, there's Amanda. So we've been a very poor, uh, talking. Uh, first off, uh, this last quarter, I did have a chance to go on multiple access plans with the county members in the county team. Um, one quickly to set based on that, um. As you may be aware, uh, the past six years, uh, participated with uh the ninety-one, which is one of sixteen. Five one is the main for the people of the country. Um, generally, we respond to the bars fires, but. The opportunity exists for any other uh large critical response, um, quite a few teams respond to. Uh, earthquakes, hurricanes, uh, massive flooding, my team in particular has a history of uh. September eleventh, two thousand and one, teams on the national rotation. And on the twelfth, they were flown to uh New York City, assisted the city of New York over the first two weeks of February. In fact, that created a uh a twenty-year arrangement between the New York Fire Department and Southwest P One, where they sent their fire by. So planning to teach them. Um, and all the best, uh, they did, any others finish in the country. Uh, the team is also on rotation, and then the uh. Space events separated over the next, when we began, and then all of this on that. Um, it's not a dismembered wildfires, it's any sort of uh business I have. Uh, so just wanted to show my appreciation to the management and the team for allowing me that opportunity here. Uh, Colfax County, go out, uh, another interesting note is. So there's the sixteen five one teams, there are very six five teams that hanging in the next year, um, slightly. But in the southwest, we're getting to the Arizona, so there's about four hundred and eighty. Of that group, uh, state in Mexico. Uh, employees categorized as county or city employees, there's only five participating of this quarter, and I want those five. Uh, so I I'm really proud to have that number, I'm really proud to represent our county as we go up, or as our state as we go up. And I hope you guys share that pride as well, and the opportunity that we're facing. And you guys, case, and I can bring guys to do it, the county is really, really vital. In fact, one thing I'll be looking at, uh, when I say ordering on the side of, uh. There's one region where you did things differently, as far as wildfire response. Uh, typically in state order, they go through the border and part of Forest Street, and we're in New York, Minnesota, uh, Forest Street Department. Uh, there's one region, uh, recently, they created a subgroup, they handled all wildfire response and took it over from O D A. Um, it's an interesting model, something I'll be discussing with our local authorities here. Uh, ways that we can make things better as far as wildfire response, and you got to go up. There's a lot of value that I can bring back by the moment, I'll just again, I'll thank that uh to me. Um, so as far as ongoing projects, of course, we have the um. Emergency water program for fifty fire, which is about three hundred acres, uh, seven hundred fifty acres of mass creation and retreating. As today, we completed all the seeding thing, and we have about two hundred, two hundred and fifty acres completed from the last station. Uh, our deadline, we have the question of decision on top of our last extension, so right now we're looking at second date in December for finalization of the project. And we're well on track to completing that before the next year. And of course, uh, receiving was completed this last week, we got the first invoice for that, a hundred and. Uh, thirty-six thousand dollars, which is gained within the. Within the combined agreement, that's a hundred percent on the federal side, so there's definitely be paying all those funds. Uh, we're working with our unexpected for that process and be very, very famous. But then once their uh next payments coming in, of course, full price, it was about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Over in that area, but again, that's no money out of the kind of pockets, so they add any time less to the profit. And as a result, we'll have a large treatment area, which is going to do a great bit of work to stop some of that sanitation that's going inside of my area. And also into the Rialto Creek and Rialto, of course, speeds. Yeah, range, you want to go all the way down into uh, it's the boats. Um, so we open a lot of house three boats file, solves all those problems that are hitting through the tree. Uh, another project that's been ongoing is the uh hazard mitigation plan, if you recall, um. Out of the fires from last year, uh, review of our hazard mitigation plan was overdue. Uh, northeast economic development took on as the. Chief Financial Advocate under FEMA to help us rewrite that. Initially, it was going to be through a regional plan with more county and Colfax every place they're together. Do some differences, uh, it's not separate plans, but again, there's what they can tell on producing plan in the Colfax county, that's why we can't pretend that in my part. Um, by advocates, uh, minute of the day on the project, uh, you you did it since two weeks ago. Although by that, it's point one, actually meant all the asked marks requested, we did, everyone's done submitted, inserted on the paperwork. Um, that one did, uh, present an accurate numbers, figured out the knowledge for the plan for creation. Uh, which is, I hope, what it means for the type of people. Uh, so that was the recommended, um, go to for us, that was also the same rate we could go to for more count. Right now, uh, approval of that will first go to uh FEMA and then through. The municipal homeowners development, and then it will be concerned to call by its government for final approval in that. But again, I know we're gonna take this next, or we can't, roughly equal six thousand three hundred dollars. Your take, um, which I immediately did, unless we can give a month in there, but I got some very planned for this. Um, other stuff going on, of course, we had a number of small fires in the county. Uh, all of them have been maintained at the smallest footprint necessary. And of course, uh, outstanding work from our little departments, so county departments, they're actually great. Um, they've got some investment around, so really appreciated that, um, next six weeks, we had actually brought up some. It's very close to uprinding regions, um, within our forest district, because we still don't have any, uh. Well, they'd be seasonal, but a seasonal full-time employees working for a nice for the board. Current, so they brought us a boat to the last stage, because they're bad, and they're staying, they're doing some really, really great work on that goes as well. Uh, in recent weeks, there's been a number of control burns going on within the region. Of course, the last one, the back in Colfax County, directly was basically in the Crystal area and fighting it all. That was burned to about four thousand acres over about three or four days. Um, all that went very, very well, of course, we had some bad smoke, we didn't notice, but that was about ten. Um, that part of the larger project in the part of this painting, about twenty thousand acres. Then I buy a gun, and we're looking at hopefully complete that for next spring. But again, there are, quite a lot of those, they're watching the script for the burn closely, to make sure that you know that, right, period. Again, I agree with what they're doing, uh, they're doing a great job, and they're certainly. I think they're overstapping to their credit on each one of the burners to making sure that they all stay. Uh, there's been some other burns going on, both the TAFs and Rio Rio County. Uh, so we need to put it back for that. And then there's the state current lands, headed for October the thirtieth, ordered by Black Lake. And currently, that is still planned as well. But again, the state will be looking at conditions as we continue on, uh, there is a point pretty very, very different. Um, this next week, and we have to be working with the Mexican U T as far as re-therapy. And examining our, basically our major repairs as far as small rule. And then analyzing our, basically our all the VUs for winter, our unnecessary shutdowns to our highways. Um, so that way we're getting all our units properly positioned in the right place, in the case if you have a shutdown. We have children, we have a very, very cool, uh. Standard, standard with your affair, um, so that we're, that's very good, and it's very. Some other stuff going on, but in the future, of course, still working on long-term plans for, um. With exercise, I've talked about this for forty years, with the keys, getting kicked down the road. But again, I'm working with ways I wish by a plan, um, hopefully doing some more large scale exercises to the part of the fairness for a. As a material built in the Colfax county, then, uh. The main partner we work with, that is stay right home, because they have any contact for other materials response. For our entire region, which is a little bit of Colfax, and we become. And then, uh, uh, bridges. Didn't want to create bridges, so as far as highway twenty-one and the Morris Creek and Rialto Bridge. The current thoughts from U T is basically they're looking at a repair of the bridge and a replacement. Uh, they've analyzed the main structure, that seems to be intact, if they can replace the prop things. The schedule they're talking about is three months, um, the problem is, where that three months time when it starts. Um, I think there's some needless thoughts there, but basically about a month to get a contractor, uh, voted through. And about two months actually, we can leave and work. But what that timeline is as far as the start date, uh, the best time to marry is we're still looking at three. But three to six months is better than most few years, whatever you're talking about for. And of course, there's any part of time frame, but so hopefully we can probably completed by spring, uh, maybe late spring, uh. The main area of concern is we want to make sure that that road looking for Miami residents, obviously, there's a major burn for us. But we want to get that road open before there's someone that uh is with it. First, the negative impact going on, scouting from their office.
Mr. Commander, actually, this is really a comment for you, uh, Mr. Manager. Since that's longer than the U T, originally, we don't be, we get, but they have that very prepared on the end of the summers. Yeah, I don't think, but your timeline probably makes sense because they tend to, uh. Look at things on a positive side, but, um. I guess my concern is that we just need to keep an eye on my end line. Uh, because we did go and graded, uh, two weeks ago, three weeks ago. I think it's been the greatest since then, but it's been the greatest since then, yeah, I think it was maybe I haven't been out there to look at it, but I only did write it and. I usually need to keep my name because that's. You're gonna get a lot of traffic now that one point was, I I think they're talking about keeping an eye on it every two weeks or so, so. To to keep up with that traffic, although the traffic volume is going to go down as soon as we get back. Yeah, we definitely wanted to sway both the private and the, they, they're, they're, they're. Basically, we'll create this problem for our fire department, standing out there, we'll be fine with it. But, yeah, I think it's taken these overall, um. I think it's hard to exactly, we could affect. Uh, the conditions of that bridge, and then of course, the other bridge that recently came up is a re-quit. Over on lots of cap. Uh, so after the county baby versus declaration. Uh, before did the declaration information on the rest of the G S D M. And I requested forwarding on to governor's office. Initially, I heard that in the G S D M that since it's not due a natural disaster, there's not much they can do that many. Uh, since it's just old age, but there are some additional avenues that we can start looking at. And solve the, again, that, and. And we're in the part, and so we can do anything we need to, or to get everything. Hey, hey. Uh, just to show you, and, um, in relation to that. Um, is, you put this here, this one, you're already in here. Uh, I think you can tell us what the status is on the new route that they're going to use and place onto that bridge, I can do that. Mr. Commander.
Okay.
And I appreciate it, and thank you for running on, giving all that, bringing back that education to the whole next. Sorry, thank you. We'll go ahead and take a five-minute recess.
We'll go ahead and take a five minute recess.
We're going to continue on one twenty-one, so I'm going to put the pace.
Good morning. Um, we're actually, um, we get, um. We are each in the. I know we have, um, fighting our. And, um, you know, I mean, I see your commission. So these areas, you know, we're doing, and then, um, US system. Um, the next couple of times, um, we're all at once and all secretly, so they can do that part of them. So we're deciding not to sleep, because even we're at, you see, but you might need to modify the report. Um, I think we're doing pretty good. With everything right now, medical permit is gonna be. Okay, it's good, everything is pretty much done. Um, unless you, uh, I do want to appreciate you guys giving me those two. Right ones in, we're seeing any, you know, build. She was starting on the first, uh, November. We do have the time bar in. Um, or our time ran, we want to be with this topic of there. But I have our training, our story in something. So now we have three medical. Um, person in our, in medical area. Um, we, so far, um, for our chemicals. We have made hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred seventy-eight. Um, large differences, um, everything that we have to do other than making, I mean, one out of the hundred ninety-five. Um, there's actually that one, so. Um, so far, we're doing really well with that, is.
Sorry, and that's a lot, right?
That's a quarterly, so we managed to have. And you have, of course, the, so you have the case of the brain. I did week. And so forth. Um, we continue to report track any force and there's some for our animals. For the workers. Um, but hopefully the next couple of weeks will have, we resolve this, like, issue, our commission, our having issues with. I don't know that, that's, that's, I mean, really, really well. Our workers, um. Our average daily population sixty-one. For the corporation monthly. Um. There's a few maintenance issues, something. Um, most of the issues that we can't get fixed right away is. Yeah. You know, sometimes we can't get the frustrating based on that. You know, and then that, I think, would be pretty good. Um, that. Um, and then the next couple of months that I said, um, we're gonna be having your S L P. Um, say our machine is gonna become, or she's gonna become per section. Uh, and then, yeah, I'm not fired, so. As we have.
Maybe that's.
Just, we're really hungry, and at least the hour and half is sealed. One, because she will be the other one. Yeah, yeah. We will be getting one back, holding his position in case they're military. We've been gone for three years, we'll be back in there.
Yes.
I just wanted to acknowledge him. As I keep, he doesn't blame, he is. So, yes. Um, on the day. And we can already start finding that city issues, I just wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's such a. Thank you for coming.
Good morning, I'm Chairman Trigill, ladies and gentlemen. Um, again, my name is Sebra, I am focused on the center. Um, you did see my quarterly reports, um, September twenty-fifth. I sent the files, we're to the Treasury Office to start their tax sale. Um, and it's like our numbers did match pretty well. Um, October first, my state, um, abstract was due and I did, uh. It's a movie early and everything seems to be okay on it and I believe they have till December twelfth. Um, myself, Joe and three of the phasers will be taking, um, December eleventh through the fifteenth. Um, uh, physical classes to keep our hours up, we have to maintain every four years thirty hours. And that will be happening in December, that has to do with fifteen, so we're gonna be good though. Um. I will be needing a, um, position open and be eager my, um, mapping. He's been retired next year, so I would like to be a physician come in as soon as possible to train. Um. There's not a lot of experienced people that can do mapping in the Treasury Office, so I'd like to try and get somebody. For like six months to train in that position. Is that something I need to put on that commission meeting to?
Yes.
I just wanted you all to be aware of it, he is going to be tired. And we need to see him go because I can say that three more years is my turn, but he's ready to go. Um. And of course, in November, December, we are preparing, um, for the following year, twenty twenty-four, so that's our daily time. We will be sending out ad letters, uh, business personal property, um. And new construction permits, sales. Our most sites will go out April first, twenty twenty-four, and we come to all our values in the quarter that. Uh, for twenty twenty-four. Um, I know, right, you had sent Joe an email about taxes paid in advance. Um, and it's always been that way, I know when, um. Lydia is her thing, her tax bill rating, I think that's due to the thought, it's a software. Um, she can, when she get third party. Um, she can bet anyone were on that, but, um, we should have that off at some point. Uh, due to being the taxes.
And there's going to be a problem with the ordinance, so I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Because I hadn't read that one.
Yeah, and I can have the app to do with my, and so Joe, and I want to thank him, he has been. God send taking over what needs to be taken over. So I'm gonna, and I said, I'm gonna thank them all. Also, I have a question to you guys, um, I know that while I was gone, you went to the former law. In my office, is there any? Plans to fix that or?
I can address that in my.
Okay, okay, right. Any questions?
Sure.
Well, um, the position you're speaking of, um, just the, 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 kind of the temporary position.
February and then take over, and, yeah, so I'm not asking them for, you know. Yeah.
Thank you further. Commissioner.
No, no, thank you for that.
And Karen, I'm just directly calling, when I was on school board for, uh, summer on school adjourned. We did this where we would bring in an overlapping employee. And, uh, I can tell you as far as operationally, it was so much smoother than an over, overlapping employee. The benefit was tremendous compared to the cost, and I know we still have a budget, we have to stay within our budget. But I, I do think it's a good idea to do in critical positions when possible, that I'll offer my employees, and I think. Just as here today, simply I have avoided the commission for a temporary decision we have. And, um, yeah, as long as the plan there is to do that, it makes sense for critical positions. Thank you. Thank you, uh, man. So it actually, kind of considering that has sort of to work decisions, uh, with the G I S, I think, hiring this. Well, I think that it's been, still over forty years, I think, for around forty.
No, he's been here eighteen years or something.
I think it's longer than that.
No, I guess too, I said, I guess, but he said it's a miss.
Um, so. With the G I S, I've been talking, uh, with the state. And there's some money out there for regarding transportation and, and other stuff, G I S. Having our recent county urgency, I went down to fully understand where the roads are at within my district over there. And to come to find out the last road map we have is from like nineteen seventy-nine. So I don't know if it's possible or, I think, about seventy-nine. And then, uh, if Andy wasn't there working as G I S program, I probably even. And I didn't get any information. So with that, though. I, I emailed him on Sunday about the transportation stuff in G I S, I said, yeah, maybe we do, and this is a medium, I don't have to. Follow up with you later. But maybe that could be a training and an updating, and maybe it can be paid through with a grant. So.
You're also examining G I S, you're not getting involved.
Okay, great, great. And also this one Saturday, this did you reach out to me, he had protests, well, and, uh, they went very well. He had nothing but to say, uh, so he understood the process, and I. His hat still on, but they weren't. Like, like it was, and he was very suspicious of your office. Yeah, and, and one last thing on this other issue that I was working. With, uh, John. Uh. I, I see any ordinance that it is that you can't, uh, give somebody the identification. We see on the law combination that they're paying the best. And the constituent didn't mind paying that, it's the problem was that they said, when they asked how much you want to get paid, they offered. According to the constituent, to write a check of ten grand, and when y'all came up with the number that they would, you could just reimburse them. And that wasn't allowed, but the issue was, I said, they didn't. They said that you guys couldn't tell them how much it was owed. And the challenge with it is I don't want to get into too much because we can talk afterwards. Basically, they bought two lots to combine them because of the separate requirements. And, um. This house is almost done, and they can't get a permit for a separate system. Until the new U P C is issued. And we're weeks away from the ground, getting too hard to put a sentence.
Well, I think there was a U P C number issue because you learn Andy maps it, will give the clerk a U P C number. But she can't work it in her computer until.
I think saying, I think it's something that. Or a constituent told me that they weren't given the U P C number.
I mean, you can.
Uh, because everybody needed permanent, but a sentence.
We can only U P C, but it probably would be what's going to be going forward. She can, she can do taxes paid in advance, all she can have to do is use what they paid the year before. But with taxes away now, I'm.
Yeah, you cut me off on the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, when the accessory office cuts me off. When she's sending the tax rule, I did speak to this lady, I never said about paying extra, what happened when?
Treasure, you're trying to understand this.
Thank you.
That was such a. We don't, I just saw that on some case.
I think what happened was there was the confusion, um, when we're doing our taxes, is that to give me a cutoff date? Not to take any more taxes than I can, so we have issue with the overall ones. Um. But then, your office sent a letter to the constituent saying they had to pay the taxes in advance. Which I understand, but I had a cutoff date, so I told her. And I did talk to Debbie, and so, and maybe when you do a letter saying that now taxes in advance can't be taken. Um, because we have to cut off data.
Well, and two, that's, that's the, a letter that we send out, if there's a combination, or if there's a, any of that's taken out of a reasonable restriction. It can't really change that, but. What probably we said is taxes are gonna be going out anyway, why don't you want to be in advance?
And actually, if you call now. And you can do it, I didn't take the number, I told her I didn't have a problem with it, that we can't take it because there's a cutoff date.
Yeah, I hope they understand, I don't know, it's probably been in that a while, but. When we have a period where especially in, in the construction industry, which is limited by seasons, right? So even have a few weeks where they.
And.
They can't act because of our policies. There's a thing like we should be able to design policies that would not prevent somebody going forward. Even when they're, especially when they're operating the three day, they just.
In the middle of that, we're shrinking rates, so then we can't use off next last year for the rates. Um, and right now, they can call in and we can, we can get the work.
So then you could come up with a policy as a commission instead of, during this time, bringing people. At a hundred and fifty percent of prior year rates or something, whatever number you guys want to come up with, make sure it's all covered. Because like I said, it's still, what, pretty. Pay whatever money was needed.
So you had the same thought where you could do that, even not worry about that, we had the same thought, I just bring it up there. If we had the same thought where. Then you wouldn't have to have that two weeks, you would already be right there.
It's always been that way, even when we had.
Oh, yeah.
It's always, there's a cutoff rate.
Yeah, it was, we're, um, okay, it's a policy.
It's easily done, and when you have the same software, you can get the taxes done quicker. Not by, you know, she has the very information, Alfonso and I were going back and forth with Triadic to get. Her second, this first sound, and it was not a funny time, so that's a lot of an extra, I think, two weeks that didn't have to happen.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um. Yes, that, that is, that is tough, and it is, but it turns off whoever, you could probably, my first year, um, treasure and qualify. Alan and I were fifty thousand, we're gonna work it, have it, and I created our own taxes, of course, it were, it will coupon up this day. So it could be done faster, but. Okay, so I'm currently, um. Two, and we did collect link of the taxes. And we're currently at the same percentage, last year, like August, September. We have more collections, but it was still of the same percentage, and I put that to the first, the, uh, first mark. On working out the link with. Bill to be finds, to find people and make a pay. And, um, we're currently going to invest with the State Director of Office, they already just said that. Um, to get our money, and to get our money within twenty-four hours, we've done small investment, not big, um. Again, we're, uh, going on the taxes, nothing with the, 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 trying to get them hours. And I sent them an email and. They were, I thought they were supposed to follow, they didn't, we were working, we're still gonna get with them, we're also, um. Alfonso and I met with. Jennifer and Dave, and they're going to give us a little higher rate in the money market account. And we can get that transferred. Immediately, we don't have to wait for twenty-four hours, they're gonna roll up this eight rate, they're hitting my balance, it's two million. So they're working on that now and. We also finalized my. And, um. That's the money market, um. We're also, when I, I just wanted to, affiliate meeting, we had, I had several, um, credit card companies, and we had a wanted to hand. And Miranda wanted to hand count, but now that it's our busy time. We are, they do that after the first of the year. The current company we have, they want to charge like two hundred and ninety nine dollars for a handout. These other companies are willing to give a lot of our merchandise for free. And maybe we go not a few, we're always making with rates. A call, you know, but they're gonna be probably around what we're off, what we're taking. If not, just a tiny bit, but. And right now, tax and revenue is here, um. That if we conduct this sale before the end of the year, they have to do it on the education, that we're working really hard on. Um, working on this, it's not gonna be the few, the few that we've had in the past. Um, and last year they did a reoffer, but I wasn't real happy with it because they had the kid and a lot of people. Um. Nobody told them about the kid that they were gonna have to pay all the taxes. So, uh, working with Ellie on this, because we've never had a reoffer, Alfonso and I were. Working on a lot of deletions, we had a, what, how are you? So we had to go through and delete. So that's gonna come off our, um. Where we're not going to be collecting. So we're having a lot of, I've seen. A lot of information that we're not collecting. When I did my report to, uh, full cover taxes. Uh, there was some that they said were deleted from all the homes and personal property. And I'm gonna give her the list, so it will have to be a need to delete from that here, because they're not gonna be fully controlled. That will help us. On bringing our percentage higher of what we are in collect. And what we're not getting is that we have our records, we found rid of. It that we don't need, and it's really organized. And we do have permission to, I have to send that to the state to, um. Who we can do for a couple of our records, and then we'll get on to the other, but you don't have to send me drop. Um, Alfonso, when I showed this lunch and at A Y, forget.
Um, it was just regarding the break-ins to the local businesses. Um, just because some information there got on my A M list, all kind of keep in touch with people within the community, I guess.
And you talked about getting, um, audit information to the school district and municipal, it's kind of like center, but another application for more information.
Yeah, so.
Requests and all that.
And we've done our audit, um. We've done our audit, our audit disinformation to the, um, auditors. And that's going on November first. And any questions?
Yes, and so the fact that we're going on November first and they're ready December tenth. Yes, and then, yeah, we say on the tenth or earlier or prior to. Yeah, and the way it's kind of worded on the bills, they'll go out November first, it'll say due November tenth. But then you have until December tenth to pay without a payment, just so really finally they have this.
So we, we've been busy and we're gonna work on, if I talk after the first year and get that investment. Maybe going to turn. But I'm ready to do that for you, so we got any, so we, I let Sarah and Richard go. And what we're doing, I had to come and listen to our call with the state, so. We'll work on getting that then.
Thank you, I'm okay.
Thank you. So we've already, we kicked off our regular local election, it's staying pretty busy in the office. And we closed our voter registration on October the tenth. Uh, we currently. Do have same-day voter registration at our own, uh, in person site here, as well as our mobile voting. Sarah and I went out with mobile voting, um, yesterday was our first day, we went into fire, we had a hundred and twenty seven voters show up to vote with us. Today, uh, is the last day that we will accept an absentee voter application. Uh, so that gives the individuals enough time to get their ballots out of there back to us. Stack is staying pretty busy. Currently, we have sent out all our records of our logic, so if we have records requests. Or any type of research, uh, you have to contact them, get our documents, so we can provide the copies for the individual. We've issued twenty five merit filings, uh, we've had two business registration. Uh, we've worked with their client and put his updates, uh, and we've recorded one of us thirty five documents. We've continued to expand the commission meetings and very nearly. We have been collecting for all our coffins as well as microfilm. And, um, we've already certified our voting machine, they will be deployed out the Thursday before the election. That's about the only thing we've been doing in our office.
Too, that's it. So, yeah, I understand very much.
Uh, I don't really have any questions, Mr. Cameron, but I do want to give out a big thank you to. Sarah and her clerk, uh, for yesterday's early voting in Angel Fire. For us, for those of us that live in the Netherlands. The distant reaches of the county, we greatly appreciate that. And just to, you know, in the last mid-year election, we had four hundred and thirty one votes. At least that many votes were from there. And so with you getting a hundred and twenty seven, that's not very personal.
But that includes, uh, people that are outside of the elections as well. So it wasn't just.
Oh, it's probably still, probably five percent.
It is. You know what really enjoyed it? The people were, were happy with us, um, and thanking us for coming up. Um, so we had a good day as a favor.
I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. And we will be in the mess on Wednesday, so. And then next week, we have Maxwell on Monday, uh, those hours are from ten to two, and then, uh. Street, no, it's a road on the thirty first, and then from ten to four, and it's straight around the. We will get.
Uh, I'm sure you all have any other work. Uh, one of my lawyers, all I ever get is ten minutes. Unfortunately, right, we busy, uh, everything, um, what we are, just made language. That the, uh, impacting our transport, we were hoping to make the screen board and the chief of. They're trying to establish a lot of high plants, part of the capital, the body that they want to kind of find that. These transports, uh, not even said, I've been saying better else, maybe it's both, they all have to begin shoot. Uh, within MC. You know, we see that, we just heard, if you can talk to them, maybe they look, and also we, the cost of the next day comes to us. They're very knowledgeable, right, who were bringing them out. More of this is for your, I mean. All their current parties, of course, kind of address that one, so then. Uh, they can add a review to the product, that's. So that's a, maybe come from, uh, uh, transports, uh, including overtime that costs for being. Uh, and also the fact that the board and the degree that we're talking about, the volume, the large, you know, sometimes. So they're, they're all vast. Uh, also, um. Again, you're always talking about this every year, with, uh, addition of the temporary provisions, um. We should be able to afford to ignore a lot of the, they're even bothering us to try to, uh, quickly. Once you get the data, that's a lot of that along, and a lot of the hours I could be administering this. We are, she's the currently in that field program, we have to get out the next speech, uh. And we'll be on the other day, because three weeks, uh, he's the one here in New York. And he's in the military, he has to go back to New York for his guard, uh, term. They work with him, they get all of these guards stuff done to give it a beer, but we're not for a few weeks. But he will not go back to there, and then we'll get to the academy, but. The, on the, uh, review of private, not distribution, they're, they are as part of the library portion of that. They literally, they haven't really thought about it until the number of, uh, next year, you know, that area. Oh, they're, they are working on that. Again, I talked to our A P department, and I have a booth. I think very helpful, uh, slightly with upgrading our reviews, uh, so how I'm making a bit of my research. Older microwave machines, and all the, uh, emergency communications, where they're on, so I. Uh, they call me, they got approved. Uh, we're in a process, uh, upgrading the computers, we're going all our earnings managers. And all the county, we're in a very strong, we're out, we bought a new system, I don't know. I don't understand all that, anyway, there is no upgrade, uh, that provides. Right, they need to for all time, for knowledge and. Sure, I could, so right now, I mean, the eighty five lanes, I'm going to play front, the future since when we can be that is, yeah, with these. Technology changes, whether it's in the war, I mean, I know it's up to them, it's some part of the, or instead. Yeah, directly possibility, uh, same old, works off the larger features themselves, bring it, works off all your things. If any fires close to change our contracts. They're coming to this up there here at home, they, 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 they. You think you're with this new technology, with the, because I would need to borrow this lot of gas, you can't use. And what they, their radios, when they're in canyon area and so on. For this new technology, oh, isn't he that, it, it may offer some of that, we still have issues on highway thirty eight. Once we get further down, four thirty, four hundred twenty, yeah, uh, talking to our radio vendor. Uh, that probably requires us to build another recorder, so I can, I can, uh. We have an issue, obviously, count on the ninety three. Far away, uh, other area, we have some bad clocks, uh, and well, even all the, we all have, but it's a lot better. Uh, than what it's nice for, uh, ownership, you know, we, we, that's time to operate on the one review. So even sort of time to talk to the dispatch. So it is getting better, but it's, they don't have to be. Um. With the decision center, uh, again, working with, uh, they'll, they'll, they'll. They, we adding nine more table jobs. Again, with the technology from our takers to the line camera that we do, like, to pick out, you know, border in the cloud and. You don't have a lot of I T connectivity, so we added nine drawers to accommodate that, that building, should, uh. The line for the expansion, to show us all this. Uh, or their core that can grow to the technology. Uh, they actually completed that project, right, as well, um. And we all did, decided to finish five parts on. Putting everything in the switch, you know, there. For ten, I'm not sure if you guys understand, they're. I had, you know, the, the, with all that stuff. Um, they've been, they've been, the ports, they have, she's branding, they're taller, she's, uh. Fifty bucks for a reference, uh, they're operating out. I think the decision center that can even solve. I have some purchase that, for, uh. She is, uh, actually being installed, be there again this month, I'm getting away with. Uh, whatever current you're giving, and all operating, decalibrated, uh, except for the. So they're keeping that as well. Uh, as well, I've been working with, um, cabinet, you know. An industry that we first, with their, and the other, I had to regenerate. Have another meeting on, or, or, um, that's what I want to do, and then we'll become. What if they really want to do that, we, I issue that as the, the. And, it's super. So I really, I'm ready, this is, I already answered this, we're, I am, we're, then we finish. All right, I understand very much, you've got, and you do, you should, and, of course, I'm saying. Uh, this, but it's, I, I want to get to the, to the, for, each other's information. Uh, the only, uh, that on C A L S, is, is, uh, the legal part, this. Um, he is retired Dallas police. And he asked me to go to you that he would, if you could have shares with. If he had a share, but needed place to stay, and when he lived in this. Uh, like I said, he would offer, you know, free. Second rates, I guess, I don't know exactly how you worded that, but, uh, and we should kind of let me to think, um. I don't think, like, you need fire, there used to be two chairs, I don't really know anymore, uh. How many do, when you need fire, these, uh, new entities, is your intent to try and distribute them throughout the county?
It is, and I have two of them.
Yeah, two now, and, uh, I guess, uh, definitely all homes and, uh, and definitely. Okay, I mean, yeah, he's very, he looks like twelve, he's actually wearing. But, uh, into that, most. That has, that very, this is, uh, a challenge, to get that, some other, in a sense, um. And so that's something I worry something. Yeah, he needs information, uh, I think he was to, but he said, that's the real one. Uh, all of the money, I didn't even, yeah, I didn't show the files, uh, trying to put around installing, we have a desperate status. You, I rest, uh, the, the, uh, or even like the kind of voice, the law, the vote. Uh, breathe, God, this is the operation, they don't even accept the work again, to address those, donation. I was trying to do more of it, but, unfortunately, they're kind of important, and then. They have three, uh, to search, uh, this, uh, three springer, three summer, two, and about. The shared question, say thank you, uh, for going, your, one of your deputies. Went to the crime meeting that they had, this is correct, I really appreciate that, that was, uh, law enforcement. Uh, was there speaking, uh, really made the shares part of the, as far as the county to. So I appreciate that, and I just appreciate you having that big platform. And then I still think that I'm quite involved in, that's important to information. For restrictions, uh, just want to say to God on grants, thank you for going after them, you've been doing a great job. I saw animal complaints on there, but you were just on any, this is kind of, are those animal plants that don't contain any of these penalties?
Uh, some of them are in, uh, the county, like, very far, people, people exterior. Um. And all of those animal things are actually, uh, printed out, you know. Um. Forty percent of those things now, we have, uh, a lot of them actually, they're, they're, they're on the segregation. So, uh, yes, both have it, but a lot of those are in that, for us, very.
Thank you. Again, that's really appreciated. Thank you. Thank you, Cameron, would you like to make a comment? Good morning, uh, so I didn't have time to prepare a court date, I have to, now, I'm gonna start on the first, so. Uh, more of the video so far is kind of makes sense of the work of our marginal best, uh, I'm sure he can accept it, but you know, I didn't. Uh, meditation, start by, yeah, community contacts with everybody within those, uh, either bids or whatever, yeah, going on and. Just following, uh, uh, biggest goal, coming into that, you know, just keep following. Where he started with the departments as far as, uh, trust, uh, giving order, trust, and, and. Uh, coordinated everything that he had coordinated with the, uh, fire chief. Um coordinated everything that he had coordinated with the uh fire chiefs. Um several ones have reached out to me and let me know the reacts with absolutely. Picking up the ball more where it's already went in that direction. Thank you very much. Commission. Thank you. Appreciate. Is that all for the quarterly reports? So commissioners and commissioners are county manager. I have just a question. So quarterly updates or it's. Um who are we supposed to be hearing from? And I'm seeing. Uh I know he's had the New Mexico B M P meeting. I just wanted to ask that um. I see we got senior companions in the lottery tax. We have emails you mentioned kind of quarterly update. Are you receiving? They're supposed to be receiving all the updates from us.
No, um Mr. Garrett, I think as far as quarterly update, we have been on additional doing. Yeah, department ads, you know, like the officials. I don't think we've ever had a uh a quarterly report on lottery tax, but you can certainly include that. You sure a lot.
Yeah, um so this is this is just what I have on the list here. And maybe I'd like to see and hear of issues that are coming and not necessarily this meeting, maybe the next meeting. And maybe we can split these up into two different meetings in the future. And state it's going to be honest. So I don't the D O I programs with fiscal agent. The S program uh we have senior companions. Roach, but I'd like to hear from. From my profile to hearing any kind of engineering projects that went on within the county and that they almost. We're gonna fall behind. Uh facilities are proven for occurring in better county building like the the accessory office, et cetera. Um I add in the grants for this, you know, there and solid waste. So. Commissioners, they're. The ones maybe that I missed or making a quarterly updates.
Commissioner, I would add to that the uh airport.
Oh, yes. Please move further um. Quarterly updates will go ahead and go on to the table item. I remember. And I have a ten session. But the uh security automation system. Fill all the other intentions.
Well, yes, the price did go up. Last year it was um thirteen thousand five hundred seventy dollars in each tent. And then you can see that the wrong packet is back to sixteen thousand four hundred fifty dollars. So the difference of two thousand eight hundred forty three hours in twenty ten. And I did confirm with renewed they they are able to afford the increase. And the contract was acquired November twenty first.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner. We'll make all in under any motion to approve.
For.
Second, the voting second vote.
Commissioner.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Virginia. Moving on to number twenty two, this commission of the commission.
This is in the future, in change, the order, including managers, that I can turn the permission about because if I. Frequently asking for updates. The manager probably already planned on hitting me, but uh anyway, um but I. Thank you for the uh the addition to some of the roads that are managed, which is really really worrying on that. Um I would like to update on the project that is upcoming down there. Um I'm still getting a lot of calls about trees. Um and I will uh Mr. Keen says that he will be on that Twitter and uh. Just to know that I still. According convention for a lot of this. Safety issue, um I would like to be on the temporary process of foster. At bridge of. And the uh the tax status of the project was uh. Also, like, you know, uh when we addressing the uh part of these research projects applications. I hope I think they might have been managed by your. But even as on the. You push, I'm sure.
Um I think the I think maybe on a couple of things uh the commission. Uh first of all, the central ownership alliance, if that we actually this morning in the fire. Uh on there is also uh. The partnership alliance is in ready to split in the dollar grant application. Uh for the community mall or the test grant specifically for the village of the fire. For those who need to don't know, we got eight point three million last year for the unincorporated portion. Uh of Reno Valley. Uh which also includes you part of it. Uh but um. It specifically wasn't. Uh when it's going to be applied to A fire or A goodness, we're having a five percent grant. Uh that and that is only in. Um and it does also look like in addition. That the worship alliance will be receiving up to twenty two million dollars from the. Uh urban wildfire interface grant federal grant program. So uh. And we did an additional continuous grant for. Uh the Reno Valley for, again, I believe it's another eight million dollars. So um we. If all these come through, and again, everybody goes positive about it, um. I mean, we'll have. Almost forty million dollars working in Reno Valley in U Park over the next five years. The forest saying. It seems, I don't know, I'd like to see the county trying to figure out how to. Help our economy that we're going to be pulling a lot of material out of the. Out of uh the forests in our county. And right now, like the logs that are or the tree trunks that are candy processed or lumber. They're shipped almost to Colorado. Because here's not anywhere. I don't, I would really, I'm a new parent, right? I like, I know there's some. Economic renewable resource development. They had a lot of people talk about, you know, uh biodiesel plants. And people talk about uh. Uh different forms of. Uses of this material. And I'd really like to see the county kind of focus on how can we utilize this material and grow it out of further. I mean, we used to have. I don't know, six lumber mills in Polfax County. Now I think there's one. Here in our town, that's the only one. And it just seems, it seems like a missed opportunity for us to be shipping all this material. Either the slash, you know, can we turn it into pellets? Can we use it for biodiesel or something? Electrical generation. And there's been a lot of people that have, you know, talked about it and you kind of need a approach, but it. It would be nice for it to be an initiative from the counties to look and figure out. How do we get a lumber mill back here? How do we get some of these other technologies to the county? Because uh. It's it's a lot of material that we're going to be pulling out of. Reno Valley U Park in the next four years. It's a lot of material and. Really going to chip it and put it on the ground or going to burn it or we're going to ship it to Colorado.
Do you know, Commissioner, if there's really contact with the shaving plan there exactly? If they can use any of that or the old bees owner at the house?
So I think it was, now this was a while ago when we contacted them. And I think they had a contract with C S Ranch. Uh at that time that they were pulling material out of over actually back up of one twenty. And so I think for their market, and again, I wasn't the one who contacted them, so this is secondhand information, but. At the time, you know, they're like, yeah, we're interested, but it wasn't like a big priority for them because they already had contracts on the material they needed. I know that uh the lumber mill here in Bretonne does pull some material for their, is their primarily making uh. Uh post, since post. And they do pull in some material and they pull a lot of material off of going to paint, but. They also pull some material from out of state. And so we're hoping to replace that. That's. Not a huge volume of material. We need expansion. Uh uh the process in this, you know, I know there've been talks of putting a firewood plant somewhere. I mean, these are all things people talk about, but. It seems like that, you know, the surrounding worship lines is kind of, you know, we're getting the grants to thin the forest. And there's a bunch of people out there going, yeah, we got this great idea, but there's not really a direct like. Somebody focused on saying, how do we build? Our economy using this material? And that's something I'd like to see county. Uh. Take direction on and 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 uh, you know. Add that initiative. I have some people that. They're magnificent. But anyhow, that um. I don't know if the uh. If the uh. County manager uh is planning on talking about the uh the grant that we put in for purple airlines or not. Um. When I heard that we did not receive that um. I started putting dealers out to figure out why would it be wrong. And um, you know, I don't want to get into a lot of details here, but um. The bottom line is. The county did everything right. According to D O T. It was a decision that D O T went. To the uh secretary of transportation recommending in good fire big that grant. So it was a decision made above the Department of D O T. Now. I'm hearing this from people that are in politics, so. You know, I don't know how much water it holds, but uh. That is, and and as a case, that's extremely disappointing. I I don't know how we. Fight that, but it does seem, you know, of course, to lead to the implications like. I mean, why would they do that? I don't know why they would do that. Anything I would come up with would be a guess, but it does seem. That, you know, the fact that Polfax County went red for the first time in over a hundred years. Uh we have a blue. Um leadership of the state. Does that have anything to do with it? I don't know. I hope not. Um but uh. It is concerning to me that uh we did everything right. We. Were recommended by the Department of Transportation for the grant. And at a level higher than that. It was determined to give that moment to. Someone else. So uh and I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you, Commissioner. Um. My commission, not everyone, but it's saying, there's about any kind of commission is. Uh for the energy meeting that you guys had with me in Boston, Ed Rich or Julie Rich. You know, and the thing about what Tom said, it made rich. The going to the natural disaster, I don't know. Like this, this is. Um I didn't want to talk about the the airfire service and. I had been talking to Pedro, the uh because I'm gonna I'm gonna want an extra to. What did, why did we not get it? And if it was just due to only only, then I wanted to have a review of the grant. On any basis, we could improve it uh from one evening, yes, as much as we. Uh not this week, but the second week he wants to have a uh phone conversation about it. But there there is other ways of all of about this. And I want to hear from members. And I want to go. Talk to the D O T. I was in my box to you, it's going to be. A. Oh, it's going to be ill. From her, she isn't part of the D O T. She's a big. Uh supporter of this grant. We get her back and it's a lot, and she's here and becoming for reelection here soon. So this is what we can offer her and urge her to do so. Um. This is the type of thing that. So. Um I had a meeting becoming manager, the Senator, Central Committee. It's easy, I. Um about talking about Randy in the county, they had a project, I sit on the shelf, and we said. The city, the family of part of prior commissions and about advertising the county. And like they did right to the store I don't, they called the. Next time. This is kind of county soul. Uh just wanted to show you guys, and it's very dear to know, I'll let you know. Uh also, I I figured this out for the commission, I'm putting on like. And we can walk in the habit. Uh it's all kind of this county called Redo, which is our neighbor in the north. They had a. This is kind of experienced by accident, but they're. They did this, so they're very long, they're grabbing Randy, bike rides or everything else. I know the the lottery tax commission, the lottery tax orders working on for other brand books. Uh that's something back at the go to that. Thank you guys, I'm able to read. Uh I went to the economics on the air around town on Friday, learned about living, living grass, everything that's kind of the same. But that was very educational to go to this multiple. All those work is uh. And I did ask Grow Economic to present to us in the future meetings. Part of us to receive legal grass is we have to show that we are as commissioners supporting economic development. So I don't reduce for economic development various space, but I don't think we directly support an organization that does. Economic development solely. So Grow Red Zone is just reference. Red Zone and surrounding area. That's the name they go by. So I just want to let you know about that. I also attended the governor's podium on the future transportation. I'll be discussed Monday. Uh it was very informative. I met a lot of individuals from the Mexico B M P and other. Departments, I mean, we can't affect period that the governor had is there, including the governor himself. Um for our way, it's very good information on. What the what the governor is trying to do, the programs out there. I looked at that out. Our star communities are bringing E V chargers. They go trend out, their E V chargers are off full. Every time I go up there, maybe if we could stop here, it'd help a little bit. But also there was uh incentives for removing old decent vehicles off the road and putting in new vehicles. Part of its grant, part of its thirty year loan at point zero zero one percentage. So it's something to consider for apartments tank older decent vehicles. Um also, I've met with the Mexico counties on our insurance, I have this concern reviewing our loss ratios. Our law enforcement loss ratio twenty thirties, five hundred fifty percent. So that's going to directly affect the premiums we're going to be paying. Uh everything else is pretty much within reason. Uh we did have, maybe you all encouraged the county manager to approach the driving forces and any of their courses to. Uh government you, I believe, is their free training that we get. And I do ask by our December meeting, and we had a safety policy uh presented to the board. Or consideration. Uh that was one thing that New Mexico counties recommended we could do that we cannot have, but. That that the county has a hold on possibly our future loss ratios. I also asked the county manager then trying to fill out the missions you did, whatever I talked about. For um for the handle, I have the results presented by the governor in my years ten. Uh and this one is to be handled by the county manager or if it does pass or not. It is, it is the statute. If we do have to do this um. I was going to ask to the country on the purchase of the product facility. And then also, I would like to, this is going to go off of what commission we're talking about. Um. So back in twenty fifteen, they did an ordinance number twenty fifteen that will three. This is the local economic development act that. With the Polfax County Commission proved. And I go to at least our, the Polfax County Economic Development Committee. And what this is as a whole, one commission on. And what this is, is the whole one commission on there, and one representative in each community within the county. They can be orderly or purely, you know, and, and managers, all. And this would be, I, I'd like to start as an update, what's going on, what are you doing when we do operation, reconnect with each other, build auto app. So maybe the individuals might not necessarily know. Uh, what's going on in Angel Fire, well, and maybe there's some other things that's, or even on a development that could be managed to be here, well, for me, so. And that is. Missed it.
Yes, because she did, I, yeah, I remember it did online with, um. I believe that the county comprehensive plan also needs to be updated, if, as part of that economic goal. Um, I believe our last one was. That was in fifteen, maybe? Um, and there was, how they're, from, from state to, 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 to that. And we had started, uh, I started on that, we were at, like, it was. Maybe, maybe, well, I do think it's, it's. Or I did, uh, I was. Let me get my shirt. On the initiation of the month. On the number twenty three, and the manager's pocket.
Thank you very much, Director Germaine, and, um. I'm glad to be here, I'm ready to, uh, make sure you know that, um, my plan is. Um, once again, the first night I had is, uh, acting county manager, um. Uh, has had some, uh, pretty significant health issues in their family. Uh, so I go back, uh, from Colorado last night, on this meeting, um. I just didn't, I don't think, um, they're gonna be able to come back for the rest of the week, uh, due to the illness. So, um, I'm coming, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and continue to patient. Uh, I'm gonna stay in the area, and I'll be available by phone call. And I'll keep my phone with me. With that said, um. Rowan Bridge, um, particularly a bridge. As the commission is aware, um. The manager's office was notified by Lynn Stevens. That, um, the state had done an inspection. And had asked the county to immediately, uh, close that bridge. Um, we didn't have a lot of information at that time, uh, acting on the information that we did have. We immediately closed the bridge, I ordered that bridge closed, um. The next morning, uh, and obviously I know that, uh, in doing that, there was a lot of calls from residents. Uh, because we booked a whole lot of time, a lot of information, now, and we did that with a lot of information. Um, later, uh, that day, uh, we did get, uh, a seminar Zoom meeting with Glenn. And, uh, ordered pictures to this permission. Um, several of the support structures on that bridge had failed. And, uh, were actually all the way broken through. Um. I think we dodged the bullet. In talking to residents, they were in the middle of a cattle roundup out in that area. Um, and they typically use that bridge to load cattle trucks and transport cattle out of that area. I think, uh, once again, the county's decisive actions to immediately close the bridge. Um, were exactly the right thing to do, and, uh, I think we, well, then likely could have gone, gone for bullet. I want to commit to commission on that as well. The very next day, we went into emergency session, and I did do an emergency declaration, um. Hopefully, um, I, I think that was, that was the right decision. And we'll continue to explore, uh, funding options and things like that after we, uh, move forward. Uh, currently, and just so you know, uh, Lynn was gonna be here today, and asked. Um. That I brief on, uh, road bridge issues for now. Um, he is on the natural project. And he's trying to work on that gravel product project for A four and A one. Um, we need to get that done, um, in the midst of everything else, so that's where he's at today, he's out in the field. And working on that gravel project. Um, we have worked with Wes Snack, who's the, um, landlord, um, next to the bridge. And he is working with Lynn, our roads superintendent, to come up with a low water crossing. Um. Next to the, on the north side of the existing bridge. Uh, to facilitate, um, traffic through there as efficient as we are, there are alternative routes, but. They're thirty, forty, or fifty miles an hour away. So we're trying to get that, uh, established as quickly as we can, uh, right now, Lynn is also working, uh. Looking at what resources they have, I know that they have a big cohort. Um, and that they've located, and we're looking at cost, uh, estimates, um, to, uh. Establish that low water crossing. Um, as part of the planning process, I've also contacted, um, Mike Hillline, our, um. Handling engineer. And we were working on plans to, um. And have those plans and the works flyer to replace that bridge. And so they expedited, and are working on, uh. Getting that plan ready, and I had been, uh, in time just this morning, that they should, uh, be ready to have a plan for us. By next week. So, and once again, we're looking at an alternative, a temporary bridge, and we're looking at, um, trying to move forward. All with the plans, trying to, this is quickly as possible to get that bridge, which is best. Um. As part of the airport, um, planning here, looking.
Bring on, on that bridge, have they come up with a low water crossing yet?
A location?
Yeah.
They have, and it's. Um, and what I understand from my Lynn, um. The, uh, the landlord there is. Working with us, um, they, they've identified it, and I think I mentioned earlier, it's gonna be tested to work.
Really, really, I'm, 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 I believe it.
We do not, we're still looking at processes. Um, moving on, the airport, um. Commissioner, where, the resources are pretty accurate, um, all the information you ever seen. Um, I have, uh, get kudos to Virginia, um. She did do everything right, uh, everything was, was, uh. There was, there was no fault, uh, by the county at all. And, um, in the information that we got from Pedro, this was simply, they ran out of money. And, um, they want us to apply it again, um, but, um. That was the issue. The county did everything possible to get that, uh, commercial grant going. We put in a lot of time and energy and effort, uh, we partnered, collaborated with, uh. The resort, the citizens, uh, worked with, um. The, uh, Airport Advisory Committee and everything like that. So I think it was disappointing, but at the same time, we did get a one way to main autograph. Uh, for an airport, and so we're gonna be moving, uh, suit the airport anyway. So we're gonna be moving, uh, forward on that, we did get, uh, for a main autograph. For the new Abrams, we're gonna be moving forward on that. Um.
I, you just, I just like to clarify, uh. Uh. You know, they started when I was all, I don't agree that they ran out of money. What they did is they chose to give somebody else money, so they gave, what I was told, they gave half of it to, um. Uh. I can't remember the town, to continue their program that they previously set up. And the other half to a new, um. To a new, uh, airport. Which at this point, according to my sources, is undisclosed. So, it. It was, it was more than they ran out of money, I, like, again, my point was, we didn't do anything wrong. It should be very political to me. Uh, for us not to get that, and that's, it's funny, because I was told, they don't even know who the. Other airport is, is getting unfortunate with. That we wouldn't document, I thought I was told, I, I hope, your information may be more. Updated from what I was told. Virginia, did you receive any additional information on any of that?
No, hopefully not with one of that, they ran out of funds.
Yeah. So, they, they, they did run out, it was a mistake to give to somebody else. Well, what happened to the, and, and at the time, there was a point where our, uh. What are the consultants, we were usually told that there wasn't anybody else. With an application, and, and that was relatively recent.
Well, once again, to make sure, I think, what, uh, look into that, and, um. Well, well, that's what the information, kind of, what. By the latest, I had, uh, I do have on vacation, so, that's exactly what Virginia ever told us, that they had. Went out on, to explore that wood. Um, once again, as I mentioned, natural road project, uh, for A four, A one. Um, they're working on, on, uh, that as we speak, um. The roads superintendent and I, and Mexico, like, public transportation. Um, had a very productive meeting, and one of the agents, um, that the county had gotten in, uh. Had challenges with many projects done, and so they extended the challenge. And essentially. What happens, just like with this. Like, what we had at the beginning of the year, or the bridge that failed, um. Recently, other issues. Or county board breaking department, um, is not big enough to work on a lot of these certain projects that we get funded for. And at the same time, uh, deal with emergencies or other situations that come up. So I think moving forward, um, a better plan of action would be to, um. Work with contractors on a certain projects. Um, the state doesn't care, the contractor doesn't, as long as the money is, uh, uh, appropriately. And that will free up a road bridge that can be maintaining the boats, bridges, and, uh. Do the work that they normally do, and as we see in the song, from late. So it's been a busy year, uh, already, the funding at the beginning of the year. And it's gonna be, uh, gonna continue, uh, into that with this, uh. This emergency, uh, the, the, we've read about, that's the, the gap load. So I think working, uh, in a future, um, to, uh, rest things as they. Uh, get assistance from contractors on such a project is exactly the right way to do it. Um. Once again, the, um. Want to advise the commission, uh, on the E nine one one. Uh, we were supposed to start this, uh, this month. Um, we're not gonna be able to do that, we're still helping more accounting on their E nine one one system, so we are straightened for next month. Uh, so hopefully, we get in there and, uh. Get, and once again, just, uh, bring anybody up to speak. Um, Colfax County identified with some issues, uh, with our E nine one one system, and some errors. And so we have enlisted the state for help, and the E nine one one state coordinator, um. Is going to come in with, uh, personnel, um, with equipment. Uh, to bring us up to date and correct all those errors, which I think, especially after turning on. The, uh, public comment today, it's absolutely essential, um, that we accomplish this. So, uh, I will keep the, uh, the center aware of our progress there as well. Um, solid base, um. We have had a few, uh, challenges, I talked with, uh. I saw a place, um, in the sun when I came in. Um, and I agree with, Mr. Weir's assessment. I think right now, basically, the analogy I would use, is kind of like in the eye of the hurricane. We've, uh, went through the, the front half, and, uh, right now, we're in a relatively calm area. And that is because, uh, I believe that. A lot of the residents, certain black lakes, uh, air fire, unless they're, well. And so the, the demand has gone there. That's the man going down. You're not getting a lot of those, um, issues, uh, working place. Uh, the only issue that, uh, people was able to tell me, uh, this morning. Uh, was that, uh. We're getting some, a lot of contractor materials, especially on being I. Uh, and so we put up signs in that location as well, between our daughter. Um, solid base is wanting to be, uh. A challenge, and it's a complex issue, it's multi-passive, I have been working with individuals that. Um, have expressed, uh, an interest in, uh, in coming to work for us. I have, uh, as, I have attempted to, I'm getting a meeting, but it's like, so. Um, and facilitated that meeting, and kind of see what the rest of the thing, as of today. Um, we have not been contacted, uh, contacted by, by state, so, um. I will continue to, uh. Make attempts to find that, and at the same time, we will know the offense, you know, preemptive. Um. We should have, um, testing for the, uh. For the fighter rocket position, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Tanwall stepping in as an interim fighter. And as soon as I get back, next week, we're gonna, good day, going to sit down, do interviews with that position involved. The chairman and I had an opportunity to, uh, once again, go to an economic development. Course, and, uh, it was very interesting to take at the convention ceremony, um. Yeah, I, I think that's, uh. Some of the ideas presented, uh, are excellent. Yeah, I know the season is gonna be really cold on that, and get out. Our land, uh, turn that over to us as well, uh, I thought that was gonna help though, and, and she even gave it the hope of the word, and get. A little, uh, lot of thought, from kind of what we're looking at going. At the same time, uh, chairman and I had a meeting that, uh, someone, Kevin Ball. Uh, with the, uh, new. City manager and mayor, and the assistant manager, and I talked over some of the issues. Um. As a result of that, um, city decided to do an auction as well, they haven't done one in several years. Um, it's kind of similar to Colfax County, so I'm gonna be coordinating with him. And, uh, we haven't given up on trying to do. Kind of get an auction done, we need to do that, uh, as a condition of the wear, um, we have a lot of cars from a lot of years. Um, out at Golden Bridge, and, uh, we can, uh. And also to be a financial advantage from doing that as well. So I think if we could get more vehicles, or pay a cover rate with the city of its home, I think that's, uh, that's, I think that's a good plan. Um, some of the, um. Issue that I just made aware of today, and I'll be working, county company on, is, uh. The state, um. And that given, uh, Suzie, uh, letter, um, wanting to increase, um. Basically, our, our happiness by about ten percent. Once again, uh, commission is weird, the, uh, situation here. Um, we're going to, uh. Work with our county attorney, and work with the subsequent counties, uh, municipal counties, uh. That will be addressing the issues. Safety committee, I have a record, uh. Brad, um, he looked at, um, getting in the city, I say we, um, committee, uh, group. Um. And, uh, I think it's certainly, a bit of firework in place, I think it's, uh, would be. Important that, uh, that person be involved in that process as well. So we're gonna do that, um. I've also, I think in the last meeting, uh, Mr. Her wife here, and pointed out. We have some leaking issues, and that was also brought up by our county assistant. So I did, uh, talk to my county maintenance director. And you should be starting on this, uh, issue tomorrow, just like replacing some of the tile, things like that. Um, is gonna be needing some scaffolding and, and stuff like that. Once again, that leak, the whole leak was caused by, uh, dirt conditioner. That was on the saving of the, uh. Conversation, we, about, about what it was supposed to, was a leak on our. As far as the, uh, leaving the central office, and, um. That's kind of what I leave, and once again, there's been there, I have talked to Fred about that, he says that they have made. Attempts to repair it up. And what it is, we actually have a drainage, um, the engineering, the design of this building, we actually have a, a low lying area where. Um, basically, water is supposed to drain down and, uh. Be, uh, released from the lawn and grounds, and things like that. And it leaks, and when it leaks, it actually leaks into that, uh, area, and through the years, it has weakened the area. And I think we had some of that, um, plaster fall off the wall in that area, so. The fact that maintenance has had. Made, once again, several attempts to address that and correct it, and those have not worked, um red, I was going to look at. Um insurance to see if that might be, um if insurance could possibly cover that. Um, I think, um, the other thing, based on the conversation I had with Fred this morning. Is that we may need to look at getting uh, working with somebody that. Uh has a better expertise uh in fixing those kind of leaks and things like that, and work with them to fix it. Um, cause it sounds like that's been an awkward one. Leak for quite some time, and that even the repeated uh. Attempts to to fix it, it hasn't worked. So that's kind of the plan on that. Um, I do think, um, once again, with limited time over summer, um. I will uh work with the maintenance director, um and the best contractors. And I thank the commission for uh approving the board on that. Um, who's the right thing to do, and hopefully we can take advantage of what's, but uh good weather we have. Probably to move forward on that and get a pension on that a lot later. I do think, uh well, I do think I know that that will go a long way to resolving a lot of the issues. Uh and uh I think we can get a fence that's high enough, uh that even more uh rolling for some planning or something like that, trip after that. Once again, the other thing, um that is important, is uh the state is monitoring our progress. And uh, we need to be sharing the progress, or we're not gonna be well, as far as the state. So I will uh communicate, um. With the uh the state officials, and along with the government before on that. And absolutely doing everything we can in the possible for these issues. And uh, that's my briefing.
Yeah, I think the.
What, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't have that, I guess. Um, the uh, as far as the the new folks office, um that is going along very well. Um I had contracted with a structural engineer. Um, who is a uh longtime Richellem resident, now works on Albertor Heath. Basically, we reported. Uh that he gave me, this is a verbal report before the vacation. Is that there are absolutely zero structural issues with that building. There are some structural issues with the sidewalk, um and the parking lot, which are pretty much commonplace. Especially in this area, like I don't think you find a uh sidewalk that doesn't have cracking or uh or lagging. Um, we did have some cracking, um. On the backside of the building, as you recall, um we specifically addressed those issues, and said that is not due to structure. That is due to not providing an standing point in the style. And he said, uh, the fact that that isn't worse with uh pretty trouble, but it's a recent test. Um, the other um issue that we had is there was some uh reported by the county engineer that was buckling. And we actually tracked that, it was uh went through the kind of business area. Um, they actually tracked that all the way through uh the building. And uh once again, no structural issue, no settling issues. Um, the uh structural engineer believes that was a separate slab that was pulled, and that's a little bit. And that's why we have a little bit of a rise. Uh as far as the, uh we got a secondary to work, and we went in and. Looked at electrical, looked at plumbing, uh looked at shingles, but that's uh every corner of the structure. And the main issue that came out of that, um was. Um, the active leak, was an active leak in the roof. So the uh Matt clerk and I, as we sat down, we reviewed all the reports. Um, we have been in contact with the local, the local, and asked them to uh address those issues. Um, and uh I just received word a few minutes ago. That all those issues have been addressed, so I will give them a. The period, I'm recording on the Friday week today, and we'll get the phone and see if anybody, I would have them written up. Kind of going there, but. Everything is looking, uh really uh positive for the. For purchasing that building. But again, I think we've done our big diligence as far as having uh, having an inspector to the degree that we have.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, yes, anything should, you know, you just said some more questions for you, Mr. Manager. Uh, can you give us a update on the new building for the roads department, uh here in my thumb a little bit? Works on, uh we asked the engineer to come up with the design for the building, and I think third, I think that sense, and then my other. Um, my other's really more of a statement than a question, um based on your reply from. Christ Day, or your update on Christ Day, I mean, it is time to get an amendment. I'm I'm sorry, but we've given them more than enough opportunity to respond to us. Uh, you know, we've been more than generous, it's, I think. It's time to do something, and but we don't, what we don't wanna do. I mean, now it's time to do it, we're gonna do it, it's probably gonna be mine, because we're not gonna be able to do it in January, if we're in March, to do this.
Mr. Fisher, and I'm thinking where you are, absolutely correct, um I agree with you on our system at Christ Day. Um. I could have something, um. If they're not to, just a figure, there's still one person that has expressed the purpose that I need to contact. Um, and trust me, I have learned many more about solid bases than I have ever. Would have ever wanted to, but it is a complex issue, and it uh, we've all seen what happens when you have a failure. Um, and uh, we don't want that to happen. And we wanna make sure that moving forward, we're getting exactly on the right decisions, um and get somebody in there that can accomplish. The job and do it in a professional way, so we don't, so this is not a a chronic issue. And looking at the Christ Day, and we're talking to uh. Others that uh that work with Christ Day, it's kind of, this triangle has been better, but this triangle has been worse, I think. Uh if you mentioned since that last meeting, it's been uh, not as bad for the guests. That say, one would want to, but why to develop a contingency plan? Uh we're gonna need to develop some contingency plans so that um, basically, we can try to, um. Need to track facilities that are always uh heavily going, at the same time, we're calling it on, and uh. Um, have any new subicles uh put out? More than likely, it's not gonna have to be manufactured or anything, and uh built, and uh then just give it. So this doesn't uh anything for them. My head's tempered, uh this is gonna be a uh. A lot of, a lot of hard work and one of the coordination. And uh, and I understand that, I think the commission understands that. And we're gonna continue to go forward.
Thank you.
No, the thing I was uh, we go to the great. Uh, maybe uh in the, obviously, that some of the uh. Situations that Anne, uh bridges failing and things like that, um. It would be a big, I'll have forward put on uh for you in the next meeting. Uh, good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Senator.
One question, um, I mean, you already mentioned the uh, sorry, the final, the, the, your projects, um. And you know, I would, I would have taken a second to do that, and it uh. Our previous mission is that as the events on again, equipment, if I uh. Have a valley down, to buy a uh. Little boy, a, a closer, uh. To, you know, western line, so that the road department can be more efficient in doing their projects, so. I, you know, if we're gonna do that, then we might as well liquidate that equipment instead of uh. You know, because I I think I see a difference, a big vision change here, so I think we had something to have to be discussed.
Thank you.
Thank you. See, over the moment, move on to the chairman, uh let our team begin again.
Alright, so they moved his hand.
Yes.